Excellent. Well, it is 6:30 PM. We will call the meeting to order. This is a general meeting of the School Board for Intermediate District 287. My name is Regina Neville. This meeting is livestreamed on the District 287 YouTube channel. The meeting is also being recorded. The link for the recording will be posted on the District 287 website in the School Board section. The public is always invited and welcome to share their thoughts with the board. We ask that you please complete the virtual meeting request form or written input that is available on the District 287 website in the School Board section. Written requests received by 4:30 PM on the day of the board meeting will be read at the beginning of the meeting. And given that we are in a virtual setting, I'm going to invite board members to please select the raised hand link. We have two options, so there's a raised hand link on Board Book Premier that brings everybody in with a queued order, so that way it's one way for me to follow it. But I can also watch for the Google Meet raised hand, so I'll just do a sweep for both. So see which one you can find, but that is a helpful way to just let me know that you would like to make a comment or ask a question. Since, again, that this is a virtual meeting, all votes will be taken by roll call to be led by the clerk. And at this time, I'd like to invite Jackie Moscata-Jones to please read the mission statement for District 287. Welcome, Jackie.
Thank you, Chair. The mission statement of Intermediate District 287 is to be the premier provider of innovative specialized services to ensure that each member district can meet the unique learning needs of its students.
Thank you. And this is a tradition that we began about a year ago to read the mission statement at the beginning of every board meeting, so board members alternate and will get to hear from many voices throughout the year. So at this time, I'd like to do staff member introductions. And our clerk, Crystal Brackey, if you could please call each board member's name, and I would ask that you please state your name and the district you represent. Welcome, Crystal.
Thank you. Andreessen.
Shannon Andreessen, Hopkins Public Schools.
And I am Crystal Brackey, representing Richfield Public Schools. Casey.
Good evening, Ann Casey, representing St. Louis Park Public Schools.
Keen.
Hi, everyone. Andrea Keen, representing Wayzetta.
I'm looking across my screen. I don't see Ruthie. Am I missing, just missing her? Okay, if she comes in while we're doing introductions, I'll come back to her. Coons.
Hello, everyone. I'm Michelle Coontz, representing RNO Public Schools.
Marty.
Hello, I'm Heidi Marty, representing West Taca Public Schools.
Moscata-Jones.
Welcome, everyone. I'm Jackie Moscata-Jones, representing District 279 Osseo Area Schools.
Neville.
Hi, I'm Regina Neville, and I represent Adina Public Schools.
And then I'm looking to see if Sam Sant is here or if he's here over phone. I have not seen him check in yet. Okay, great. And then, last but not least, Cydel.
Adam Cydel, Eden Prairie Schools. And I'm having a little bit of internet difficulty, so just before warned.
Thanks for letting us know, Adam. Thank you, Crystal. And at this time, I'd like to welcome staff members who are joining us this evening. With us, we have Michelle Axel, Ann Becker, Melissa Brodin, Jeffrey Chai. Oh, Jeffrey, okay, Chai. I just confirmed this, and I think I forgot.
Chai.
Chai, very much for the correction. Jeffrey Chai, Von Garvey, Radius Guess, May Hawkins, Kim Helgeson, Rachel Hicks, Superintendent Sandy Lewandowski, Ben McGraw, Juanine M. Genie, Kathy Pankowski. Kathy, could you please let me know about the pronunciation of your name?
That's correct, Pankowski. Great, thank you.
Elizabeth Lodge Rogers, Gloria Wilder, and Antoine Williams. Are there any staff members I have accidentally missed? Welcome, everyone. At this time, I'm going to walk us through tonight's agenda. We have our regular consent agenda, which will be followed by Share the Success. We have a couple of things to point out this evening. It's School Board Recognition Week. And we also will hear from North Education Center about the Superpower Campaign. There is a Business Services and Labor Relations Report, which includes some action items. We'll talk about the fiscal year 2021 budget revision, the fiscal year 22 Budget Assumption Program Withdrawal Report. And that will be followed by a Human Resources Report with a resolution directing recommendations for reducing programs and positions. We'll conclude this general board meeting with some board business and information. Are there any additions to the board agenda? Hearing none, I move that we accept the agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Andrea Keen, I second.
Seconded by Andrea Keen, thank you. I invite board members to please unmute their mics in preparation for the roll call vote. Crystal, would you please call the roll to approve the agenda?
Andreessen.
Aye.
Brackey is an aye. Casey.
Aye.
Keen.
Yes.
Coons.
Aye.
Marty.
Aye.
Moscata-Jones.
Yes.
Neville.
Yes.
Sant.
Yes.
Cydel.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. At this time, we would invite audience members to speak. Juanine, are there any members of the community who have submitted a request to address the board?
No, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Then we'll move on to item number four, approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items that any board members would like removed from the consent agenda for separate consideration? Hearing none, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented?
So moved, Madam Chair, Michelle Coontz.
Moved by Michelle Coontz, is there a second?
Second, Ann Casey.
Seconded by Ann Casey. Crystal, would you please call the roll for approval of the consent agenda?
Andreessen.
Aye.
Brackey is an aye. Casey.
Aye.
Keen.
Yes.
Coons.
Aye.
Marty.
Aye.
Moscata-Jones.
Yes.
Neville.
Yes.
Sant.
Yes.
Cydel.
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. We'll move on to item five, which is Share the Success and Recognition. And the first item that's on item five is School Board Recognition Week. And even with school board recognition, this is a great opportunity for the school board to say thank you. There are two forms of recognition that were received this week. One is we each received chapbooks from South Education Center. These are collection, oh, thank you, Andrea, collection, they're all here! Poetry written by our students. And what I want to share is, in addition to the incredible writing, when all of the chapbooks are arranged together, they make an infinity symbol. Is this not the most amazing thing? Our students, I brag on our students all the time. And I was just sharing information about what great writers they are, and then received all the chapbooks and looked at all of them together for the artwork. All right, this is just best thing ever. So certainly thanks to all of our students who we have the privilege to serve, and a particular gratitude to the students at South Education Center for sharing their creativity with us. And I'd like to invite Sandy Lewandowski, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, Regina. Just a special thank you. I'm so happy Kathy Pankowski was able to join us tonight. It is because of her incredible work and inspiration over several years that these poetry books came together each year. But this year, as a present to board members in recognition of this board week. We know that we have an incredible board and who has a focus on students. And the students were the ones that came together to make the books to give to you tonight. Kathy, would you like to just say a couple words about the books, how they came to be, very briefly?
Sure. So we've been on this journey for about four and a half years. And some of you have been on this journey with us over that time. Some are a little bit newer to this journey. And we started out just with a pilot program back in, I believe, the spring of 2017. And over time, we're partnering with Unrestricted Interest, who works primarily with students on the spectrum to give them a voice. And it's just been an incredible journey. And some of you have heard from Chris Martin, who was one of the founding poets of Unrestricted Interest, and others have heard from the family of two of our students. And that family has gone on to form their own organization after their daughter went through the transition program. And so that's her life's mission. And they have Autism SIBS Universe, and they are the sponsor of the grant that is covering this year's work. So we will have more, you know, we have a continuing journey with Unrestricted Interest and Autism SIBS Universe now. And thanks to Elizabeth Lodge Rogers, the books that you have right now. When we went into pandemic last year and everything was closing down, and we only had a grant for last fall, Elizabeth approved the funding so that we could continue the mentorship program last spring through the pandemic and give our students voice through that. And I do have a couple of pieces that are recorded. I don't know if we have time to listen to those at all, or because I respect the timeline that you have tonight, a lot on the agenda.
Yeah, thank you, Kathy. How about if we get Juanine to share those directly, and then members can listen to them independently, would that be all right?
Oh, that would be just fine. Yep, that would be great. I'll make sure that Juanine has that to share out. Thank you so much, and thank you, board members, for all your support over the years, too.
Well, thank you, Kathy. This is really extraordinary work. And we're just honored to be able to have some of that with us as something that we can refer to. So thank you, and please express our gratitude to the students.
Thank you, I will do that, thank you.
And Superintendent Lewandowski, I'd like, do you want to continue with the Share the Success? I can move on either way.
Yes, I'm going to turn it to Rachel to introduce our guests tonight. So Rachel.
Hi, good evening. I think I will just hand it right off to our colleagues from North Education Center to share some great stories from the school year.
I believe it's evening. Good evening, everyone. My name is Antoine Williams, and I'm the principal at North Education Center. Today, myself and Mr. Chai will share some stories. Story I would like to share first, and then I'll hand it over to you, Mr. Chai, to share your story, and that'll be it, is from Ms. Bridget Bankston, who was one of our teachers in the C-100 wing with middle school. And our middle school in C-100 is primarily students with ASD as well as our students with label EBD as well, so emotional behavior disorders. And in this story that Ms. Bankston shared, one of our students is working really on his character and building his character with other than positive ways. And he used his Jaguars book, which is a part of our PBIS framework and recognition. And he bought some items from the school store, and he shared them out with some old and new friends. There was an old friend who he had trouble with, and this student graciously gave the student one of the items to show that, you know, he cared and expressed gratitude for the student with the gift that he gave. So that's one of our stories that we had from C-100. And Mr. Chai, I'll let you share your story.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jeffrey Chai. I am a middle school instructor at North Education Center. I service the ASD and EBD students. So, well, my story comes from, so a high school student whom I haven't seen for probably a year since the pandemic started. And I was surprised to see him. When I saw him, he was just like, well, what us weightlifters call it, jacked. Like, he looked good, he looked healthy. He looked like he'd been exercising for the past year. And right behind him was Mr. Cook, one of our safety coaches in the building. And in the background, I hear him say, yeah, he just started. So I'm asking Danny, like, hey, where do you work out? What do you do? And he's like, oh, I work out here. And I said, how long you been working out? And, you know, mind you, Danny's probably a 10th or 11th creator this year. So Mr. Cook's like, today's his first day. And I'm like, oh, it's your first day back? And then I'm like, man, I'm just so excited to see him while he's taking care of himself. And I go, I ask Danny one more time, like, so where do you work out? And Mr. Cook's like, man, he's only been here, this is his first day. I did a full body workout with him. I got him together in 20 minutes. I'm like, no way, you look like you've been working out your whole entire life. And right then and there, I spotted my hero. I mean, Mr. Cook, for obvious reasons, I mean, he's got the size, he's got the stature, and he's there on the double when you need him. But that was, you know, why I recognized him as being a hero. It was more of like, you know, he took Danny. You know, not only did he, like, teach him how to exercise or work out, he also emphasized living a healthy lifestyle and, you know, staying away from steroids and whatnot and living naturally. But Mr. Cook, he just has this mental capacity to never take anything personal. And like, everyone I know, Danny, he's a true believer in these kids. So I chose Mr. Cook as one of my superheroes over at the Education Center.
Well, thank you. Sandy, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you so much for that story. Knowing Mr. Cook, it's totally believable. And he's quite jacked as well, so he's a good person to be the role model for that young man, that student. So it's a wonderful story, and it is a tribute to you and Mr. Cook and the student to have you share that story here tonight. It's one of the things we're trying to do, and Rachel is kind of the inspiration behind this, is to continue to bring you stories about students and staff that tell our story. And that was certainly a good one. So thank you very much for sharing that. And also thank you, Mr. Antoine, for you coming tonight to also be with us. And I think board members know, but I think we can't congratulate you enough on being appointed the permanent principal of the North Education Center. So congratulations to you as well.
Well said, thank you.
Thank you. And I'm sorry for interrupting.
Oh, no.
Are we off at this time? Do we step away at this time?
Yes, you stepped away, but thank you, thank you both. Williams, Mr. Chai, thank you for being here, thank you for sharing. This is really the highlight of every board meeting. And same for Ms. Pankowski, thank you. Because we're hearing about our students and the successes, it's why we do this. And it really is worth the celebration. So thank you all for taking the time. Have a great evening. One other addition, I'd just like to mention that the board received a letter from the president of Local 2209. Thanks. So James Schmidtky just wrote a note of appreciation on behalf of all of the members of Local 2209. And I'd like to just express my gratitude for the words. And right back at you, they certainly shared respect, appreciation, and admiration for the work that our team is doing every single day with our students. Thank you. Sandy, do you have another comment?
No, that's it, thank you.
Awesome, thank you very much. Next up, we have our Business Services and Labor Relations Report. We'll begin with item 8.2, which is the financial report or the budget revision for fiscal year 21. I'd like to welcome May Hawkins. Hi, May.
Thank you, Madam Chair and board members. I have asked Juanine to present my slide show for today so that I can focus on presenting. We'll give her just a second to bring that up. And Juanine, you can go right away to the next slide. So this is presentation of the 2021 revised budget to provide background information for the school board prior to voting on it. The presentation will provide highlights of the revised budget changes, and it is not a line-by-line detailed report. Please review the budget table and notes in your board packets for more detailed information. Next slide, please. As we start all presentations in District 287, I have included learning intentions for this presentation. So first of all, we're going to go talk about beginning fund balances. Then we're going to talk about fund balance types and uses. We're going to do a brief overview of the board fund policy. We're going to do a summary of the pandemic budget impacts and unknowns. And then we're going to do details about the budget deficits that are in this and the proposed use of fund balance. And then we'll do a summary of the other funds. Next slide, please. As the beginning fund balances provide starting point for the revised budget, this slide provides key points about beginning fund balances. I'm getting some feedback, is anybody else getting that? Sandy?
Yep.
Could you mute? Thank you. Okay, where are they? The beginning fund balances in the revised budget are the actual audited fund balances from the 2019-20 school year. There are several reasons that it is important for a district to have a fund balance. The main three are cash flow. As the flow of revenues varies from month to month, it is important to have a reserve to meet the monthly obligations of the district. It can be looked at in this way. If every month had the same expenditures, one month's of expenditures would equal 8.34% of fund balance. In reality, the school district expenditures are much higher in September and June, but that's kind of a simplified example. The second reason to have a fund balance is to have a savings account for unpredictable events, similar to your home finances when something unexpected happens. And the third reason is for specific future expenses or predictable future events. Examples would include finishing a construction project or planning for the replacement of a transportation vehicle. One of the items that is included in the audited beginning fund balances is the item called Subsequent Year Budget Assigned Fund Balance. This is required by Generally Accepted Accounting Standards, and this is fund balance that is set aside as the board approved original budget for 2021 included the use of fund balance. So this use of fund balance had to be set aside in the audit as the board had already designated its future use. The district has been very conservative in its budgeting and spending, allowing us to build reserves slowly over the last decade. Next slide, please. To provide a little additional background information on fund balances, I'm briefly going to go over the different types of fund balances. More information about the different types of fund balance can also be found in the school board's fund balance policy. These different types of fund balances are set by governmental accounting standards and by Minnesota state statutes. First, we have the unassigned fund balance. This is for educational programs. It's basically where the operating cost of providing educational services to students is quoted. The assigned fund balance, we already talked about, so we're going to jump ahead to the restricted fund balances. These are statutorily restricted. Examples would include long-term facilities maintenance, compensatory, safe schools, and medical assistance. All of these spending, all of these fund balances have spending restrictions defined in state statutes. And then the last category we're going to talk about are legally separate funds. So these are funds separated in statute. And one of those is the debt service fund. So the debt service fund is for paying the debt we owe on buildings. And the district currently has funds held in escrow, and that escrow will continue to grow until we need to pay off the debt on the North Education Center in 2029. Another type of legally separate fund is called a self-insurance fund. And that is set aside for paying future insurance claims. So once again, it's a legally separate fund, and the reserves in those funds can only be used for insurance-related expenses. It is important to note that fund balances in restricted and legally separated funds cannot be used for expenses that are covered by the unassigned fund balance. It may be helpful to think of them as separate entities. Next slide, please. So now a really quick review of the board's fund balance policy. The policy states that the unassigned fund balance will be at least 6% to 8%. And just a quick reminder that 8.34% is the average that would be needed to cover one month's payroll and accounts payable cash flow. The proposed revised budget would have an unassigned fund balance of 7.5% and falls within this. The next section is just a brief overview of the use of fund balance. And I put this in here because we are planning to use fund balance as part of this revised budget. It basically states that all other options will be used prior to using unassigned fund balance. And the proposed revised budget was created in alignment with this provision of the policy also. Next slide, please. Now that we've gotten through the background information, we'll cover highlights of the proposed 2020-21 revised budget. This slide is a summary, and we'll go into more detail on future slides. Based on the current enrollment, which is lower than the enrollment used for setting the original budget, the revised budget is projecting a $5.4 million decline in the general fund balances. There's an umbrella in the corner of the slide, and that is what fund balances are. They're an umbrella for when the storm hits. And in my 30 years of school district finance, this will be the biggest storm I've encountered. The encoutment in me requires that I remind you that fund balances, like savings accounts, are one-time funding sources. And once they're used, they are gone. There are several unknowns at this time that are not included in the revised budget. As the intermediate district does not know their allocation from the December 2020 federal bill, this grant is not included in the revised budget. Also, there are potentials for future federal fundraising that are also unknown at this time. In addition, there are several provisions and bills that are being heard by state legislative committees that could impact the 2021 school year. Only items that are actual laws are included in the revised budget. Next slide, please. Now, if you're able to, and you can look at the budget table in your packets at the same time, I'll provide more information on the areas where expenditures are expected to exceed revenues. The first is the district-wide admin operations area. This area includes grants, severance, and a transfer to the Food Services Fund in addition to the operating expenses of the district. This area was projected to have expenditures exceeding revenues in the original budget by $531,574. And you will see a transfer from that assigned fund balance for subsequent years that we talked about earlier of that amount in that line. That deficit increased to $1,121,092 in the revised budget. Part of this increase is due to the transfer to the Food Services Fund, which we will discuss on a future slide. The increases in revenues and expenditures budgets in this area are mainly due to grants that the district has been awarded since the adoption of the original budget. The next area is the ALC Academic Education area, where expenditures are expected to exceed revenues by $2,249,873. This is due to declines in enrollment in both our Northern Star Online program and some of our site-based ALC programs. As this area does not have sufficient fund balance to offset this unprecedented enrollment and revenue decline, the revised budget includes a request to transfer $1,342,945 from the Tuition Adjustment Reserve Assigned Fund Balance to bring the ending fund balance for this area to zero. Clear and Technical Education is also expected to experience a slight decline in fund balance of $190,770. Next slide, please. The Special Education area as a whole is projected to experience $186,362 deficit, which will be offset by fund balance. If you look on this line, you'll see that revenues are $6.2 million lower than the original budget, mainly due to decreased enrollment. Included in this change Included in this change in revenues is a drop in the revenues for the care and treatment programs of $1 million due to decreased enrollment at these sites caused by the pandemic. Expenditures are also lower than the original budget by almost $8.4 million. And I'm going to stop here and do a big shout out to the district instructional leaders, who noted that referrals were down from member district projections and did not hire for all the positions included in the original budget, and also did not fill many nonlicensed positions when staff left, keeping expenditures down as much as possible. The revised budget also includes the utilization of some of the restricted fund balances in the general fund. It's projected to use $46,691 of the health and safety fund balance to offset the cost of pandemic mitigation expenses not covered by other funding sources. There's also a plan to use $163,154 of long-term facilities maintenance fund balance, mainly for the north education lighting system replacement, which was at end of life. And then the budget also includes the use of $484,429 of medical assistance fund balance to offset the decline in medical assistance revenue, which is generated by in-person services and was impacted by the pandemic. Next slide, please. This is the last slide, and briefly goes over the funds outside of the general fund that have changes from the revised budget that impact fund balances. Due to few in-person days, the revenues for food services will be lower than originally budgeted, and that will increase the transfer needed to $619,750, as food services is legally not allowed to have a negative fund balance. The revised budget includes a transfer from the admin operations area, increasing the expenditures for that area and the use of that area's fund balance. Lastly, the two construction funds revised budget show the planned uses of the last of the construction bond proceeds for the work completed on the HVAC project at Ann Brummer Education Center after June 30, 2020. Next slide, please. As I walked through a lot of information, does the board have any questions before they vote on the 2021 revised budget?
Thank you, May. And I want to thank you and your team for your work in consistently keeping the board informed and in managing the budget. It's a, we really appreciate the work. I would invite any questions or comments from members of the board regarding the budget material that's just been presented. I'm not seeing a lot of tiles, and not sure why. I'm going to see if, oh, they're coming back. Okay. I see a question from Sam Sant. Sam, go ahead, please.
Ms. Hawkins, what budget assumptions are you using, though, for constructing this budget with the state funding, like the, like the, what would you assume that we get for a COLA from the state, the per people funding?
Oh, Sam? So Sam, this is the revised budget for the 2021 school year, so we know what the state funding is for that school year. So this is for the current school year. We're revising the budget for the current school year.
Oh, all right. I apologize. Thank you.
That's okay.
Other questions or comments? Sandy?
I would just comment, Sam, we are, we are working extensively with Valerie Dozlin, our lobbyist, and with the legislators on bills that are beginning to appear before them now, trying to really emphasize the needs of the intermediate districts compared to K-12 districts. It's, it's pretty easy, or it's easier for legislators to understand K-12 finances and what applies to them, because that's the bulk of what we have in Minnesota. But there are some very unique things that we're trying to share with them about intermediates and the funding we need to get as well. And so we've already testified, Elizabeth testified today. We're working hard already on legislative fixes, as well as trying to work with MDE administrators on the second pot of money that came from the feds in order to get an equitable share for intermediates as well. So many things are starting to get in motion for next year's budget.
Thanks, Sandy. We'll hear next from Ann Casey, followed by Shannon Andreessen. Ann, go ahead, please.
Thanks, Chair Neville. Not a question, just a comment that, you know, this is, obviously, it's not good news, but it's also not a surprise. And I, and I just, I want to thank you, Director Hawkins and Sandy, for, for the not surprising part of this, right? That this is, you guys have been keeping us informed and been transparent throughout the last few months, this entire time. And so I appreciate that we're still able to stay within our board policy fund balance and stay in relatively good shape. And then, and then I, as, as things, as Sandy was just saying, as things start moving on the legislative session and thinking about next year, I know that we'll, we'll, we'll be seeing a lot more and having a lot more conversation about what happens next. So just, I mean, this, that doesn't, it feels like we don't have, this isn't like a choice to be made, but it, and, but I appreciate the, the way that, the way that you have been open with us about this throughout the past few months.
Thank you. That is always my motto. I try to do no surprises. It's more challenging in a pandemic, but I've been trying to make sure you understood all along where our enrollment was and what the impact of that was.
Ann, Madam Chair, if I might just add a thank you, Ann, for those kind words. I'd just like to extend my appreciation to Melissa Brodding as well. Melissa, in her first year as Director of Special Ed, has been amazing in staying in communication, in touch with our member district special ed directors. As you might imagine, it takes both a science and an art to, to work on these projections, and she's done an amazing job in her first year of making those connections. So thanks to her as well.
Yes, indeed. Thank you. Shannon Andreessen, your question or comment? Go ahead, please.
Thank you. I was just wondering with the, the school nutrition, I'm not sure how things work in intermediate districts, so I am just learning about the difference in funding and how all of that works. But, so was your school nutrition department not impacted by the, the funding that happened going to the summer meals formula that other school districts have been using for their school nutrition departments?
So yes, we did go to the summer meals program, right? But even in going to the summer meals program, that's based on the actual meals that you're serving. And our schools aren't necessarily close by our students. So when we're not in session, we don't have a lot of families coming to our schools to get meals, right? So that reduces the number of meals we're serving, so therefore it reduces the number, the amount of revenue that we got.
Okay, that makes sense.
Does that make sense?
Yes. Do we know then, are those students not having access to meals, or are they able to access meals through their, their, I guess, home district?
So we put out a lot of communication, so families had an option where they could pick up meals at our site, where we would deliver meals. We didn't have a ton of families sign up for that. We also, our social workers worked with our families, right, to say, okay, if that doesn't work for you, you know, there's this school down the street from you where you could get meals. So we, we always are working with our families to make sure that their needs are met.
Great, thank you.
Ann, are there any other questions or comments before we take the vote on this item? I don't see any other newly raised hands. So with that, is there a motion to accept the fiscal year 21 budget revision as presented?
So move Andrea Keen?
Move by Andrea Keen. Is there a second?
Second, Heidi Marty.
Seconded by Heidi Marty. Thank you. Crystal, would you please call the role for approval of the fiscal year 21 budget revision as presented?
Andreessen.
Aye.
Brackey is an aye. Casey?
Aye.
Keen?
Yes.
Dallas?
Yes.
Kuntz?
Aye.
Marty?
Aye.
Moskata Jones?
Yes.
Neville?
Yes.
Sant?
Yes.
Seidel?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next item is item 8.2.2, Fiscal Year 22 Budget Assumption Program Withdrawal Report. This is another action item. Ann May, you could please give us a little background.
Yeah, it feels like June all over again, where I get the whole meeting and I have to talk the whole meeting. So, good evening, Chair, board members, and fellow district administrators. While the revised budget was wrapping up, the district leadership was also planning for the process for the development of the original budget for next school year. As a preliminary step in the four-month cycle for creating the 2021 original budget, the board is presented with these assumptions and asked to approve them to provide guidance to District 287 administration. The assumptions are divided between those that relate to revenues and those that relate to expenditures. At the top of the assumptions document is information about any program withdrawals that member districts have indicated on their annual notification form. You'll notice that in, on your board packet, it says West Hunk is withdrawing from the Mandarin program, and Hopkins is withdrawing from the Deaf Heart Ahearing and Physical Therapy itinerant services. This withdrawal information is required by state statute to be communicated to staff prior to March 10, 2021, which is why this report is on tonight's agenda. Quick highlights of the revenue assumptions. Similar to a K-12 district, everything is based on projected enrollment. The big difference is that we rely on our member districts to provide us with their planned enrollments for the upcoming year. Due to the pandemic, there is more uncertainty than in prior years about enrollment for the upcoming year. The enrollment in projection is a balancing act. If the planning number is too low, we won't have staff to take new referrals, leading to queues. And if it is too high, the tuition billing costs will increase, as the intermediate will have staff for more students than actually come. We will continue to work with our member districts to finalize projected enrollment for the upcoming year through March and April. At this point, the projected enrollment that member districts have provided for setting for is 478 ADM. This is lower than the projected enrollment for 2021, and similar to the enrollment that was included in the monthly financial report the board approved earlier. As I stated in the revised budget presentation, seeing the changes in referrals that occurred last summer, instructional leaders did not staff the projected enrollment for 2021. The projected enrollment for the ALC programs is also projected to be lower next year than, than what was planned for 2021 by about 50 students. In summary, the revenue assumptions state that we will use the member district planning information times the state revenue allocations and existing member district approved fees to determine the revenues for each service provided by the intermediate district. We will also continue to advocate for ongoing funding for mental health and professional development. Highlights of the expenditure assumptions. Expenditures will be aligned and prioritized so as to promote the implementation of the strategic plan and the district's strategic priorities. Student outcomes, racial equity, evidence-based instruction, trauma-sensitive and healing-centered practices, and employee well-being. Expenditure budgets will be aligned with revenue budgets, and budget reductions will be needed in some areas. Here is budgeting and tuition billing ratios that were approved by the special ed director's advisory council and the 287 board in 2019 for special education programs will be continued. The district is working with key legislators to identify funding sources to continue the therapeutic teaching model in addition to the use of the remaining strategic priorities fund balance. Staffing-related expenditure assumptions. As staffing makes up about 85% of the district's budget, these assumptions are key to planning next year. We will plan to continue recruitment and retention initiatives. Staffing will be aligned to the new tiers ratio. Staffing for other programs and departments will be aligned to revenues. Projected expenditures for staffing will be based on settled contracts, or if a group is in negotiations, based on board-approved parameters. And the budget will be developed within the parameters of the board's fund balance policy. Are there any questions about the budget assumptions for the 2021 budget?
Thank you, May. Sam, you have a hand raised. Is that a new question, or is that from the last?
No, it's a new question.
New question. Well, here, Sam, go ahead, and then we'll follow with Andrea Keen.
Thank you. Being that, you know, the assumptions are that enrollment is lower, I understand that. And as member districts, we pay, pay fees. But I also note 287 does have a healthy unassigned fund balance. Would some of that be tapped? I understand within reason not to use it all and not overburden member districts with additional fees, because we're also hurting as well.
Yeah, so we, I mean, the assumptions are the first step in, in planning for next year's budget, and the plan is to try and keep costs as low as possible so as to not pass on burdens to our member districts. I don't know, you know, as far as the fund balance, the fund balance is at 7.5%, right? The unassigned fund balance. So as I talked earlier, that's less than one month's payroll and accounts payroll.
Sam, is that helpful?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. We'll hear next from Andrea Keen, to be followed by Crystal Brackey. Andrea, go ahead.
Thank you, May, for that overview. You've been doing this a long time, and I know over the years, you and your team get into a groove, and you know how to make assumptions, and then how to kind of look forward and know what to expect. And obviously, this year, all bets are off. And I think, you know, that's really true for member districts as well. In Wayzetta, we've had a really significant decline in enrollment, especially with our kindergartners. And so we're making our budget assumptions based on who is there now, knowing that next year, who knows, who might show up, right? So I guess that's kind of my question is, are you kind of building flexibility in the assumption, knowing that things could change very quickly once students start coming back? And are we kind of ready to pivot and increase programming if we need to? I'm assuming hiring people if we need to? Is that kind of how you're looking at it moving forward with these assumptions?
Yeah, so we tend to build in a little bit of a cushion, right? Because of the fact that we want to be able to take referrals throughout the school year. But yes, we, I mean, we've always had to be flexible, right? We've always said, when you refer a student, okay, we'll get your student in. Now, it might take time to hire somebody and set up a classroom and all of that, but we always meet the needs of our members.
So really, it's kind of what 287 has always done?
Yeah.
No, that makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Crystal, and then Sandy.
Yeah, I think mine is more of a comment probably than a question, and is, I think, stating the very obvious, but it's kind of combining what Sam was saying with what Andrea was saying, which is just the unease that we are feeling, and that, you know, we just passed a revised budget that showed a significant difference, and tapping into that fund balance in meaningful ways. And now we're moving into another year, and I, I think I'm just sitting with that feeling of responsibility and uncertainty that, May, I know, is times 50 for you, of how to try to do this responsibly so that we don't find ourselves in this position again next year of having to go further into the fund balance. You know, as you said, once it is gone, it is gone. And so that, like, that's the main thing that I'm thinking about as you present these budget assumptions, is just the really delicate dance of being as conservative as possible about enrollment for next year so that we don't end up in this position mid-year, while at the same time doing what Andrea said, like, actually being flexible enough that we can meet the needs of students, families, and districts. So I just kind of wanted to, like, articulate that that's how I'm feeling, and, and the responsibility that is on your shoulders and all of our shoulders is really significant.
Thank you, Crystal. Sandy?
Thank you, Crystal, and, and other board members for those comments. You are spot on. One thing I would want to highlight, and I know Elizabeth and Melissa and May are really taking it into account, as is our HR department, is that... as is our HR department, is that when we give projections and they are conservative and then go up, trying to find these very specialized licensed people once the school year starts is very, very challenging and sometimes just impossible, frankly. And so that is probably the extra challenge built into everything all of you have said is how do we get it right enough and get enough of the right staff when we need them to serve kids when we get the referral? And this year, that's always a challenge. This year, we're doubling down on that challenge. We'll do our best, and they have started already. There have probably been more conversations with special ed directors this year than perhaps ever trying to get this right. But our special ed directors are also in a similar position where they don't quite know either. So you can be assured, we're going to do our best. And just as your district is trying to figure out their enrollment during this time. And we'll certainly keep you appraised as the months go on as well as to how we're doing with that.
Thank you, Sandy. Andrea, do you have another question or comment? Just wanted to check, any other questions or comments before we take action on this item? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the fiscal year 22 Budget Assumption Program Withdrawal Report as presented?
I saw move.
Seconded by Ruthie Dallas. And Crystal, would you please call the roll for approval of the fiscal year 22 Budget Assumption Program Withdrawal Report?
Andreessen.
Aye.
Brackey is an aye. Casey.
Aye.
Keen.
Yes.
Dallas.
Yes.
Coons.
Aye.
Marty.
Aye.
Mosketa Jones.
Yes.
Neville.
Yes.
Sant.
Yes.
Seidel.
Yes.
Motion carries. May and Gloria, thank you for all of your work. Please express that gratitude to the team. No surprises, could not be better said. We're aware of the situation, but we appreciate the continued explanation and background each month. Thank you. Next up is our Human Resources Report, and Michelle Axel will present a resolution directing recommendations for reducing programs and positions. Welcome, Michelle.
Welcome. Hi, Board Chair and Board members. In continuation in what May just presented, tonight, all I'm doing is requesting that the board adopt a resolution directing the superintendent and this administration team to make recommendations to the school board regarding, you know, any reduction and or discontinuation of programs and positions. Such reductions and or discontinuation of programs and positions will be implemented only as necessary. And it will be based on the FY '22 budget assumptions, which we have taken into consideration with member district planning information. So I'm going to keep it simple as that and looking for the board to adopt this resolution.
Thank you, Michelle. Are there any questions or comments before we ask for a motion to take action? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve and adopt the resolution directing recommendations for reducing programs and positions and to waive the reading of the resolution?
So moved, Michelle Coons.
Moved by Michelle Coons. Is there a second?
Second, Anne Casey.
Seconded by Anne Casey. Crystal, would you please call the roll to adopt the resolution directing recommendations for reducing programs and positions?
Andreessen.
Aye.
Brackey is an aye. Casey.
Aye.
Keen.
Yes.
Dallas.
Yes.
Coons.
Aye.
Marty.
Aye.
Mosketa Jones.
Yes.
Neville.
Yes.
Sant.
Yes.
Seidel.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. That concludes our Business Services and Labor Relations Report for Board Business. My question is regarding AMSD and with our representatives with Crystal Brackey and Casey, Andrea Keen, and Ruthie Dallas. Do any of you have a report from AMSD?
We have a meeting since the last meeting.
Okay. I know that that will ramp up as we move forward into the legislative session, so thank you. We will have a workshop, which is going to be livestreamed as well. That's following the conclusion of the general meeting. But before we conclude our general business meeting, is there any other item that anyone would like to bring before the board?
I had a question on the NSBA conference. Would that be up again this year for persons that tiana is that?
Good question.
I know last year you had set it up.
Sure. Sandy or Juanine, could either of you address that question?
Yes, Madam Chair. Ruthie, I, we certainly would have that available to board members. For those of you that are new each year, I'm sure some of your local districts have board members who attend the National School Board Association Conference in the spring. And we have on occasion had board members go as well as part of the 287 Board. This year, I don't know for sure. I'm guessing it's virtual. But there will still be the conference, and you are welcome to work with Juanine. And we do bring the names of people that want to go back to a board meeting to get approval. But that is how it would work for this year, just like any other year. So yes, if you would like to go, I think you can give your name to Juanine, as can anybody, and we'll bring those names to the next board agenda.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments before we conclude this evening? All right, with that, is there a motion to adjourn the general board meeting for March 25?
I saw move Andrea Keen.
Moved by Andrea Keen. Is there a second?
Second, Ruthie Dallas.
Seconded by Ruthie Dallas. And Crystal, would you please call the roll for a German?
Andreessen.
Aye.
Brackey is an aye. Casey.
Aye.
Keen.
Yes.
Dallas.
Yes.
Coons.
Aye.
Marty.
Aye.
Mosketa Jones.
Yes.
Neville.
Yes.
Sant.
Yes.
Seidel.
Yes.
Motion carries. With that, we are adjourned. Juanine, am I correct that we have the same link? We stay at this link for the board workshop? Yes. Okay. So I'm going to propose that we take like five minutes just for a little stretch break, and we'll come back here and just reshuffle for the board workshop. But thank you, everyone, and thank you to the staff who joined us earlier this evening. We appreciate seeing all of you and the information that you brought. So at 7:35, we will come back together. See you all in a few minutes. There we go. I'm going to invite everybody to come on back and rejoin. We'll get started with our work session in just a moment. Welcome, Barb. We'll do introductions in just a couple minutes here. We'll get, make sure everybody is back.
Nice to be here.
Quick check. Make sure we have everyone. I think we can go ahead and get started. We may have a couple more people just wandering back in a moment or so. But just for general introductions, my name is Regina Neville, and I'd like to welcome Barb Dorn from the Minnesota School Board Association to join us virtually this evening for a workshop on hiring the right superintendent. And Sandy Lewandowski just wants me to share with all of you that she was certainly happy to do whatever was best for the board. And she's going to step aside from this particular workshop, recognizing the board's role in leading this decision-making process. And I'm happy to be beginning this process on superintendent transition. One, with the gratitude that we have had a superintendent for 15 years, which is an impressive tenure, and that has led to a lot of strength and development for our district. And also grateful that we have a seasoned board. Each of you has experience from your home districts that you bring forward to this process. So tonight, the opportunity to meet with Barb and have the MSBA workshop gives us a chance to just all get on the same intermediate page together to learn a little bit about this process, which is new for some of us. And some of us may have done a couple of searches at this point in time. So there's a lot of wisdom that we can gather and bring together. Barb, is there a particular way that you'd like to go about introductions so we can just acknowledge everyone who's here?
That would be wonderful. I would really appreciate it if the board members could introduce themselves. Let me know your home district, as well as how long you have served on the 287 Board. And then for any staff that are joining us, if the staff could also introduce themselves and share with me their position and how long they have worked at 287. That would be wonderful.
We can do that. So Crystal, if you have, I don't need to put you in a spot. If you have your sheet available to call our board members for introductions, that would be great to do that. Be in alphabetical order by last name. Andreessen.
Hi, my name is Shannon Andreessen. I have been, oh, I'm with Hopkins Public Schools on their board, and I have been on the 287 Board just two months, not even. Yeah, a little over a month.
Welcome. Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
And I'm Crystal Brackey. Richfield Public Schools is my home district, and this is my fourth year on the 287 Board.
Thank you.
Anne Casey, I represent St. Louis Park Public Schools, and this is the beginning of my third year on 287.
Thank you.
Keen.
Hi, Barb. I'm Andrea Keen. I serve on the board for Wayzata Public Schools, and this is my fifth year on the 287 Board.
Thank you, Andrea.
Dallas.
Hi, this is Ruthie Dallas, and I represent Brooklyn Center Community Schools, number 286. And I'm going into my second term with my home district. This is my second year on 287 Board.
Thank you, Ruthie.
Coons. Good evening. Welcome, Barb. I'm Michelle Coons. I represent the Orono School District. I was chair of the board when we hired Sandy. So this is a long time, 20 years on this board. The first 10, I was on the Orono Board at the same time, but.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thanks.
Marty.
Marty.
Hi Barb, I'm Heidi Marty. I'm with West Tonka Public Schools. I've been with my home district a little over three years and I got with 287 very soon after I got on my local school board, so about three years.
Thank you Heidi.
Mosketa Jones.
Jackie Mosketa Jones. I'm on the Osseo 279 School District Board and this is, I joined when Shannon did so about a month.
Welcome.
Neville.
Hi Barb, I'm Regina Neville and I represent the Adina School District. I served for eight years on the Adina School Board. I rolled off in 2017 and my district asked that I would continue to represent them on 287. So this is, I believe, my eighth year on the district 287 board.
Thank you Regina.
Sant.
Hello, I'm Sam Sant. I represent Robbinsdale 281 School Board. And this is going into my second year on 287.
Thank you Sam.
Anne Seidel.
There we go. Adam Seidel, Eden Prairie School Board, in my sixth year there and starting my third year, basically my third year here.
Thank you Adam.
Hey, and I'd like to welcome staff. Maybe I will just call each staff member. One, I just wanted to comment that I'm really grateful for staff joining us this evening. We recognize that where this is going to be a partnership effort. We're going to rely on the expertise of our staff, which is pretty rich in itself. So I'm going to invite each of you. I'll just call your names and you can introduce yourself and your position on the 287 board. So Amanda Akterkirk.
Hi, my name is Amanda Akterkirk. I am the talent acquisition professional for District 287. I've been with District 287 for about six and a half years and in the HR department that entire time.
Thank you very much.
Anne Becker.
Hi, I'm Anne Becker. I'm the general counsel for the district and this is my twelfth year.
Wonderful, thank you.
Radius Guess.
Hi Barb, I'm Radius Guess and I'm the Director of Equity and Inclusion and I have been with the district almost eight months.
Wonderful, welcome. Thank you Radius.
You're welcome.
And Rachel Hicks.
Hi Barb, I'm Rachel and I help our district prioritize communications with our staff and families, member districts, and our stakeholders. And I've been here for, going on six years in May.
Great, thank you Rachel.
And Juanine M. Genie. We could, we could not do any of this without Juanine, so I just want to preface with that. But Juanine, could you introduce yourself and your position and how long you've been here? I'm not sure how long you've been at 287.
Oh, we can't hear you.
Yeah, it looks like she's talking.
Yeah, you're not muted, so I'm not sure what it is.
I think. Okay, I muted the other thing. So, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. So Juanine Denson M. Genie, Executive Assistant to the Superintendent and I'm going on my twelve and a half years and working in the same position.
Thank you Juanine, and thank you so much for your help arranging all of this. You've been a great help to me and I've appreciated it.
You're welcome.
Well, thank you everyone. Boy, that was wonderful to get to know a little bit about each of you. To all of you Chair Neville, members of the board, we are so appreciative of the opportunity to visit with you tonight about MSBA's Hiring the Right Superintendent Workshop. My name is Barb Dorn. I'm the Director of Leadership Development and Executive Search at MSBA. I have been here for, we're coming on two years now, and I work exclusively in the areas of executive search and superintendent evaluation. Have really, really enjoyed my time here at MSBA. I know all of you are very familiar with the organization and I feel very, very fortunate to have landed at an organization with such a wonderful mission. Prior to that, I was the Executive Director at the YWCA in Mancato for about six years. And so if anyone's familiar with the four YWCA's in the state, there is one in St. Paul and one in Minneapolis. Our mission was to eliminate racism and empower women. And I loved mission-driven work. That's truly where I fell in love with it. And after about six years of leading the organization, felt it was time for a change and was very fortunate again to find MSBA. Prior to that, I was primarily self-employed. I did a lot of marketing, consulting, positioning, focus groups, research, those sorts of things as well. So I had a long and storied career and feel as though I found a wonderful fit here at MSBA, not only because of the services we provide to school boards, but because I truly help or enjoy helping school boards find leadership. Leadership and strong board team relationships is so extremely important, as you well know, to the success of any district. So this is a wonderful niche for me and I'm looking forward to the evening tonight to take you through the workshop on conducting a successful superintendent search. I'm hoping that all of you have this booklet. I know there were hard copies distributed by Juanine, as well as electronic, if you prefer to follow along that way as well. This will be our guide for the evening. I'm obviously not going to read it to you. You've had it long enough where you probably had a chance to peruse it and make some notes and questions in the margins. I'd like the evening to be relatively informal, so please, if you would, raise your hand or say hey Barb or something to interrupt me, I want to make sure I address all of your questions throughout the workshop. You do not need to hold them until we're wrapping up. Okay, is everyone comfortable with interrupting me if I just keep talking? And okay, I talk a lot and I talk really quickly, so I'm consciously trying to slow down my speech, but I get very excited about this topic. So sometimes I'm saying too much, too fast and you're more than welcome to stop me whenever ever needed. Typically, this workshop lasts about an hour and a half to two hours. Sometimes it's less, sometimes it's more, but I will stay as long as needed to ensure that all of your questions at this point in your process are answered. And I know it's early. You really do have the luxury of time with your superintendent giving you, boy, about a year and a half notice. That is truly a gift to your district to be able to plan a search and have that much time to make very thoughtful decisions about what's best for 287. So by my show of hands, if I could very briefly ask of those of you who have perhaps been through a search before in your home district, how many of the board members tonight have been through at least one superintendent search previously? Two? I see two, at least for the folks that are on my screen. Chair Neville, are you seeing any more than two? Three? Great. Four? Five? Okay. So almost half of you have been through a superintendent search and I'm guessing some of you have been through more than one. So you have a great foundational understanding of the process, depending upon if you conducted the search entirely in-house or worked with a consultant. The processes are similar, but there are nuances and there are ways to really truly customize the search to the need of the district in your next leader. And so I'm hoping that you'll feel comfortable, really paying attention to what is special and what is unique about 287. And feel free to ask how the process may need to be adapted per some of those things that make you very, very unique. So is everyone ready to get started? We're good? Wonderful, thank you so much. All right, if you would first open up your booklet and turn to the very first page. At the bottom of page one, it says the do's and don'ts of hiring a superintendent. So this is where I'd like to hear from anyone who's comfortable sharing. Do any of those, either the do's or the don'ts, really speak to you? Is there anything that resonates and you think, huh, that makes sense? Or on the other side, that doesn't really make sense to me? I want to make sure we're going to address everything that you have relative to the very basics, the do's and don'ts.
I'll make a comment. This is Andrea. I'm looking at do make certain all members of the school board share in the process and I know we're just getting started, but Regina Neville, our chair, has already kicked us off on the right foot because we've talked from the very beginning about making sure anything that we've discussed in planning has to go through the whole board. So, thank you Regina.
That is a terrific foundational concept. Some districts are tempted because of the workload and I know what your workloads are like, not just on this board, but the other boards. Some districts are tempted to appoint a hiring committee or a screening committee of board members. MSBA's recommendation is that all board members take part in the entire process so you truly have collective ownership from beginning to end. So that is excellent. The Chair Neville has done that for you. So thank you, thank you. Anything else that jumps out at you?
I noticed Shannon has a raised hand.
Shannon?
Yes, hi. One of the things that I'm kind of confused about is in the don't column, it says give away the school board's right to select its next superintendent. I'm not quite sure what that means.
That's a great question and that one actually gets asked quite a bit. What we're saying in that circumstance is to remember that the board is the only hiring authority for a superintendent. You will make the decisions, you will hire this person, you will evaluate them, you will build a strong relationship with them. Sometimes a district is extremely eager to involve a lot of stakeholders in the process and that is important and we're definitely going to speak to that. You want to involve your stakeholders' voices. The challenge is when a board overempowers stakeholders to the point that some stakeholder groups feel that they get to make the decision. And what happens in that case, it could be staff, it could be a special interest group in the community, but there may be a group of folks who are too empowered. And thus, when it comes down to making the decision, if the board doesn't make the right decision or the decision that this group says that they want, they get very resentful. And that kind of unmet expectation of what role they're playing can lead to residual resentment for a very, very long time. So we want to be careful with semantics. You will be soliciting input from your stakeholders, without question. You may have stakeholders who serve in an advisory capacity. No matter what however, you do not have any hiring committees participating in this process. That's the place I think that some boards get tripped up, is they'll appoint or invite a hiring committee to be a part of it and that hiring committee starts to feel like they're the ones that get to make that decision because the board's giving it away. And it's all about setting expectations and clarifying roles. So we want to caution folks, don't give that right away because it will cause you headaches in the long term and it will cause some very, very hurt feelings if people don't understand that the only folks doing the hiring are the school board. Does that help?
It does, yes, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Anything else that leaps out at you in those two columns?
I'm going to mention the, the don't let a consultant identify the best superintendent for the school district because right now currently we are in a superintendent search at Robbinsdale and we've, we've hired a consultant. And my concern is that because they, we have the final say, I get that, but they do the vetting process beforehand, so we don't know who they're weeding out. So that, that would concern me in this scenario as well.
Yes. One of the things that's very important to understand from a school board perspective, and again, we're speaking as MSBA, we're your organization, so that is who we are always looking through the lens for in a superintendent search. As the school board, you have the right to see every single application. Yes, your consultant should weigh in. They have the expertise to provide recommendations on who the strongest candidates are. However, you as a board have the right to see every application. You may feel differently. If they're suggesting four to six candidates, you may find five of those to be in your top five, but there's someone else that for whatever reason you really would like to interview. So the consultant should not be the one telling you who to interview. They certainly can make recommendations, keeping in mind again that you own this process and you should, at least according to state statute, have the right to see every single applicant. Now, every board's a little different. There are some boards that specifically hire a firm that is a recruiting firm. And the aspects of a recruiting firm are different than firms like MSBA, for example, that facilitate the process. Recruiting firms are expected to go and find new people and invite applicants and perhaps encourage them along the way. So when you're setting expectations with your consulting firm, which we're going to talk about in a moment as well, be real clear about the role of the board. And if you are a board that wants to hand off some of that responsibility and rely on them to tell you who to interview, you can certainly do that. That's also within your rights. But if you're a board who wants to see everything, you have that right as well. So I think that's a real valid concern. Remember, you're the hiring board, you're in the driver's seat every step of the process.
Barb, could you speak about agreeing to arrive at a consensus? And I'm guessing that means encouraging a unanimous vote.
Yes, it does. Of course, it's not required. Throughout the process, you'll have big decisions to make. The first will come when you need to select your candidates to interview. Depending upon how long your, or how large your pool is, the board will want to select perhaps six to interview in the first round. That's a round number, most firms will use it. That, that, that decision is oftentimes not unanimous because you may have an extremely strong pool. You just need the majority vote to select candidates A, B, C, X, Y, Z. All right? So that's good and it's okay if for some reason there is not a consensus of unanimous vote. When you get to your moving people beyond the first round into the second, and in particular in that second round of interviews of selecting your lone finalist, it does send a very strong message to the candidate and to the community and the staff if the vote is unanimous. And very often, we do see a split. When there's a strong pool, you could see several of your finalists leading your district. So what happens during deliberations is you try to talk it out and determine who's leaning where and why and what strengths are really speaking to you and which really fit 287. If it becomes clear that there is a majority, whatever that might be, maybe it's eight, three, sometimes the folks in the minority have spoken their piece and have said wonderful things about perhaps both final candidates and they realize the writing's on the wall and they will then vote with the majority so that it's, in your case, a nine oh vote. Excuse me, you don't have eleven, you have, no, you have eleven. Okay. I'm working in another intermediate district right now with nine-member districts, so I apologize. You have eleven-member districts. So if there is a split, we encourage folks in the minority to think about voting yes with the others, simply so your new superintendent steps into a unanimous situation, but it's not required. And sometimes it doesn't happen. Sometimes people vote their conscience, feel very strongly about a different candidate and perhaps there is a ten-one or a six-five vote, but it does, does send a message if you can reach consensus. All right, great questions. Are there any others that you would like to talk about in terms of do's and don'ts? Real basic stuff, but great questions. Okay, hearing none, I do want to touch on two very, very important things in a superintendent search. The first one is in regards to the open meeting law. I always tell folks, it wouldn't be an MSBA workshop if we did not mention the open meeting law. It sort of permeates everything we do and I think you can probably attest to that. Every step of the superintendent search must be done in an open meeting. You cannot close your meetings for anything relative to the search. Okay? That means you cannot close it for your discussion about which candidates you're going to interview. And it gets a little dicey because when you're discussing who you want to interview, data privacy is a very important part of that conversation. You cannot give away any identifying information in speaking about who you want to interview, but it has to be done in public. And I always say it's both an art and a science, but you can do it. You also need to hold the interviews in public, obviously, and your deliberations. So how you deliberate about these candidates really matters. All right, we'll talk some more about that later, but you're talking about candidates who have just put themselves all out there. You know, they've interviewed with you, you have asked some tough questions, they've either done really well or they feel like they could have done better. How you speak about them in your deliberations is extremely important. We encourage you to keep it positive because there's a good chance they're watching or people they know are watching and you want to keep everything really above board and positive and you don't need to focus on weaknesses. Sometimes if you don't talk about a lot of strengths, that sends a message in and of itself, but it is not the time to criticize anyone who've really done their best to meet what your expectations are for the next superintendent. And then in that final deliberation, if you have two or three really super strong candidates, you're going to have to deliberate in public as well. And that's the time where you could potentially campaign for someone you feel strongly about. You obviously will discuss with respect everyone's qualifications and it needs to be done in the open, as do your negotiations. You cannot close negotiations to the public. This is an at-will employee. They're not part of a bargaining unit, so the board will need to discuss some parameters that they'll provide either to an individual who'll negotiate on your behalf or you need to conduct negotiations with your selected candidate in an open meeting, just post it three days in advance. So open meeting law, one very important thing. The second very important thing is what I just mentioned, the Data Practices Act. And it's a, it's a balancing act between those two because up until the time you've named your finalist, every single name and identifying information about those applicants remains private. every single name and identifying information about those applicants remains private. All right, it gets sticky for some boards when there's an internal candidate. And it's possible that there is, you really never know. But there may be an internal candidate, for example, who fills out an application. And they're telling everybody that they've applied and that they really are excited about the job. You as board members can neither confirm nor deny that they're in the running. Because that's private data. So no matter what they're saying, you simply cannot go there. All right, and then up into when you're presenting candidates to be interviewed, you again will be, be speaking of them in terms of candidate A and candidate B. Uh, no gender pronouns, um, no identifying information about where they have worked or are working. You'll be discussing those things in such a way that you're not giving away who those candidates are. And then when you've made a motion, someone will make a motion to interview candidates B, X, Z, D, and Y. If that's seconded and if that's passed, then Chair Neville would read the names of those candidates you'll be interviewing. And that is the very first time the names become public. Everything else, every single applicant that remains an applicant and not a finalist stays private. And you're used to confidential information. As board members, there's a lot of things you need to hold in confidential, confidentiality, and this is one of them. Um, but because it's debating and discussing candidates in a public forum while respecting their private data, there is an art to that. So those are two real important things, open meeting law, Data Practices Act. Any questions on either of those? Great, thank you so much. All right, the first decision you have to make is to whether or not
I have a quick question. Sorry, Barb. I have a quick question. Having never been through that process, that sounds extremely overwhelming. And I'm already feeling a little fear that I know I'm going to mess up in a public meeting. What do you do if you mess up?
If you're prepared, you won't mess up. Um, your consultant, if you hire one,
I better write that down.
They'll be able to prepare you. There should be interview training. There should be practicing done. Um, Chair Neville will run a really tight ship. I don't think you're going to screw up. And I don't want you to be fearful of the process. This process is actually, um, invigorating. And, and it's an exciting opportunity. It is not something that should strike fear in your heart. It's a big responsibility, don't get me wrong. But with the right coaching and the right guidance, you will not screw up. Don't worry about that, okay?
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? All right, whether or not to hire a consultant, and it's only on page one and two, it's briefly addressed. That's really the first decision that your board is going to need to make. Um, there are advantages and disadvantages to bringing in a consultant, and the advantages are spelled out here. Um, they understand the law, they understand the process. Um, they have a proven way of receiving applications, weeding through applications, potentially making recommendations. There's a lot of good reasons to use a consultant. There are also reasons not to. If a district has the capacity internally with staff to take on something as big as a search, you can do that. Um, a lot of districts decide to run their own searches. It does depend on what else is on the plates of those folks who are going to be taking responsibility for the search. And it depends how big you go with things like stakeholder involvement. Um, coordinating all of that can be a really big job. And it also depends on how many applicants throw their hat in the, the ring, but you don't know that until you're halfway through the process. So your internal resources are very important and are a great way, uh, to conduct those yourself. Another advantage to using in-house staff would be to save money because searches do cost money. Uh, consultants will need to be paid. Um, but by and large, I would probably say, in my estimation, seven out of ten districts probably bring in a consultant, and three out of ten will choose to do the search themselves. But it is entirely your choice. Um, but you need to make that decision early because planning the search, if you're using a consultant, they have to be involved in the very, very beginning. Okay, there's a lot of things that if you are laying the groundwork, you'll want them involved in that, you'll want their guidance and expertise from day one. So you want to make that decision first. Um, are there any questions on consultants? I'm not going to dwell on it, but it is something real important right up front that you'll need to think through and make a decision. All right, seeing none.
Do you mind if, Regina, are you okay if staff asks questions as well? You're on mute.
At least once per meeting, that's going to happen. Um, and I was on such a roll. And I didn't forget any agenda items, so all of those were good things. I am fine with that. I appreciate the questions. And Barb, are you okay with staff questions?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, I was just wondering, can you give us a range of how much a consultant might cost?
I'll try, just don't.
Okay.
Um, some consultants charge a flat fee. Some have a sliding fee scale based on enrollment typically, or the size of your budget. So if someone could tell, tell me approximately how many students roll through 287 per year, what would you call your enrollment figure?
That's a really good question. I don't have it off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
Just giving you an idea then, um, really large districts, you know, more than ten or fifteen thousand students, that search is probably going to be twenty to thirty thousand dollars.
I think about a thousand.
Oh, right, right. Really large districts will be in that twenty to thirty thousand. I'd say districts are, you know, a thousand to two thousand students. Uh, probably the fee is more in the range of eight thousand to fourteen thousand for one to, to two thousand students. And then that middle range of, you know, three to ten thousand students is probably between fifteen and twenty. And then twenty to thirty for the really large districts. That's an approximation, of course. Um, did that help, though? Okay, I hate to say it depends because it feels like such a squishy answer. It just, it really depends, not only on your enrollment or your budget, uh, but even on the, the services the, the, um, search firm provides. You know, some will do more stakeholder involvement than others, some will, um, do background checks and some don't. So there, there's some variable cost per search firm as well. Okay, great, thank you for answering that. Timeline, I have to say that when I edit this book this summer, I'm changing this timeline at the page top, uh, top of page two. I don't know of any searches that take six months anymore. Everything has sped up in the last two years. Before I started, Sandy Gunlock started the executive search services at MSB about twelve or thirteen years ago. And six months was probably average. There was a lot of time to conduct a search. And MSBA, for example, did two to three or four searches a year. Now, part of it is due to the advent in technology. Without question, technology has made everything move faster. The pandemic also sped everything up. I'd say the average search right now is probably four months. Four and a half on the long end. And, uh, we've, we've done searches in two months from start to finish. Um, six months is a long time. So I, I would have to say about the four-month window is average. Um, we did start some searches last year in November and December that didn't wrap up until middle of February, early February, so they had a little more time. But very often, districts will have the very sudden announcement that they need to conduct a superintendent search because their superintendent gets a job somewhere else. And if their superintendent takes a job in, you know, February, announces at the end of February or March, they have gotten a new position to start in July, that district has about two and a half, maybe three months to find someone, but there is still time. Um, a successful search can be done in two months. If it gets too close, though, to the end of the contract year, we usually recommend bringing on an interim to get you through one year so you can take a little more time for a search. Now, in your case, because you do have so much notice from your sitting superintendent, you could look at a six-month search potentially, and it's a much more relaxing process if you do that. Um, but you also don't want to take too long, or it starts to feel like it's really dragging on and people want it to be done. So take all of those features into consideration. I wouldn't do much longer than six months, or it will start to feel like this is a never-ending process. Any questions on timeline? Okay, not seeing any. I'm trying to see if there's any hands up. I'm not real good at those. Shannon, yes?
Hi, um, I had a question with timing in the sense of if it goes too long, are we what kind of impact would that have on potential candidates? Like, could we find one that we like, then if the decision takes too long, they would take a job somewhere else or you know, something like that? Does it have an impact on candidates, or usually not so much at this level?
It can happen, yes. Um, there are superintendents, uh, who, for example, just want one job. And they know it's your job, and you're the only job that they've applied for. And then you have some room because that's the, the job they want. There's other really qualified candidates that have, they've given a shot for three or four searches. Depending upon when those searches are wrapping up, you could lose one of your candidates to another district that makes an offer before you conclude your search. That does happen, though, mostly in, um, March, April, and May. All right, this is high season right now. There's a lot of searches being conducted. And they're just starting to wrap up and candidates are just being locked into contracts now. So if you start your search in the fall or early winter this year, you should be able to make an offer to someone, I would think, by early February. There's not a lot of searches closing in early February. So if you get out of the gate early, I don't think you'll quote, lose somebody to another district because there's not that many districts that are able to plan that far ahead. Again, it's unusual that you already know in a year and a half your superintendent's stepping down. Um, most superintendents, if they let their boards know by October or November of this coming year, that's considered early. Um, so you're in really good shape. I don't think that would happen to you. Unless you decide to not launch your search until January. And then you're trying to sign a contract in April, yeah, then you may lose some people. Okay? Yep, any other questions? All right, that's it for timeline.
I got, I got a quick question.
Yes, Sam.
Being that we're an intermediate district, what, what type of candidate pool do, do, should we expect? Being that we're not, you know, a, a independent school district?
That is the million-dollar question. Um, you never know, because you never know who's looking for that kind of opportunity at that point in time or at that point in their career. Um, I can tell you this would be a very attractive job, at least from my estimation. It would attract candidates who cared deeply about education, which all superintendents do. It would also, though, attract candidates who have an interest in, obviously, special ed or career tech ed. And yet, your district's focused on things like, um, racial equity and restorative justice. That's different, and there are not a lot of districts that have those opportunities. So I would think there's some excellent administrators out there whose passion may be equity or special ed. And they will be looking for an opportunity like this, and again, there's only four of you. So it's not as though this is a typical traditional search. Um, the ones who apply for this position, I believe, will really want this position. Now, whether that's ten people or twenty, I don't know. Um, we have seen fewer candidates this year. I don't know what next year's going to look like, but this year, I think the pandemic has taken a toll on applicants. Um, versus, you know, last year we had searches that would have had twenty people vying for the job. This year, we're seeing eleven to twelve. I just think there are fewer people right now willing to put in the kind of work that they've seen superintendents put in this year. It's been exhausting. Um, that doesn't mean, though, that the quality has gone down. There are times where someone who's not ready to be a superintendent throws their hat in the ring just for the fun of it, just, you know, they're kind of a tire kicker to see if I get interviewed. We're not seeing that this year. Uh, the folks who are looking for these jobs are serious about wanting to be superintendent. So the quality of the pools are still very high. There just are fewer of them, generally speaking. That was a long answer, Sam. Did that answer your question?
Yes, it did. Thank you.
Okay, I wish I had a crystal ball. We get asked that question a lot. How many applicants can we expect? It's really tough. Um, I think applicants are generally looking for three things. However, if you want to start thinking about positioning your opportunity, um, they're looking for, um, location. Where is this job and what geographic area does it encompass? They're looking for salary. And what might it pay? To pay on qualifications and experience. And they're looking for reputation. The, the community of superintendents and principals and administrators and associate superintendents, that's a small community, and people talk. So if you have a history of, well, you have a tenure of a superintendent for fifteen years, which speaks volumes about the relationship between the superintendent and the board, that will definitely help. Districts with a lot of turnover in their superintendent or a lot of, um, division in the board team between the superintendent and school board have difficulty attracting clients. And in your case, I don't think you have any of that. Your reputation is very, very good. So I would hope you'd have quite a few, if I had my crystal ball. Okay, thank you. All right, so timeline.
Real, real quick, um, and I, this is, this is Adam Sidell, sorry. Um, I believe you kind of implied implicitly answered this question, um, at the end of your initial foray into this topic. But obviously, we have an unusual timeline in terms of maybe the time during the year we bring in a new person and also the amount of time that we have between then and now. Um, and I guess implied in your answer was that you wouldn't recommend starting the search process prior to six months before, whether it's April first, twenty twenty-two, or July first, twenty twenty-two, six months before that date. Is that correct?
Generally speaking, yes. Um, this workshop, for example, I do for a lot of school districts in August and September. Because they're thinking we're going to need to launch a search. So they, they have a workshop in August or September, and then they actually begin planning the search perhaps in November. Um, even October. And so I would recommend that's when you start the search, but that's when you publicly announce it. You know, it's the great big ta-da, we're conducting a search. You have your vacancy announcement out there. There's a lot of excitement around there. You can do some pre-planning work beforehand. Um, the only thing it might feel like is to the board members or the staff who are involved that it's been a long search. Uh, but the public would hear the announcement and the candidates would hear the announcement perhaps in October or November. And it's a good time to get started because you would be one of the first ones out of the gate at that point. All right, did that answer your question, Adam? I'm assuming so unless you chime back in and say no.
Yep.
Okay, great, thank you. All right, timing, important, but it's not the be-all and end-all of the search. Very successful searches are done in six months, very successful searches are done in two months. All right, so hiring criteria. This is one on page four that is really, really important. Um, oh, I skipped stakeholders, sorry. Let's do page three first. Stakeholder involvement, that's really important. Um, now, again, because you're an intermediate district, your stakeholders are different than the traditional stakeholders, perhaps, in most of your other districts. Um, so you want to involve them from the beginning. Keeping in mind those parameters we talked about in terms of never saying that there's a hiring committee. But you're soliciting input from your stakeholders, and you'll identify which groups those are. One of the ways most search firms would help collect that data is through an online survey. And an online survey is a very effective way. It's available twenty-four seven. Most folks have computers, not everyone by any means, but it's a great way to collect a lot of data over the course of perhaps three or four weeks, if you're early in the process. Sometimes it's only open a week and a half. But an online survey generally asks what qualities, experience, skills, background, qualifications are we looking for in a superintendent? And you have people self-identify in the beginning of the survey as to, uh, which role they primarily play. Are they a parent? Um, are they a community member? Are they a superintendent of your member districts? Are they a special education director? Which hat do they have on when they're answering these questions? And so then you can slice and dice the results of that survey by category, which may prove helpful to the board. May not prove helpful. Uh, but that survey really gets, um, into the quantifiable information. You know, generally speaking, there's a list of twenty characteristics of a superintendent. Pick your top six. Um, those sorts of questions. So it's easy to number crunch and come up with, this is what your stakeholders said. Now, another important part of stakeholder input are listening sessions or focus groups. And I'll tell you a really brief story is prior to the pandemic, we did a lot of focus groups with stakeholder groups. We'd meet with the staff. Uh, we'd meet with, um, the community members. And we'd ask five open-ended questions and we'd listen, and we'd hear what they had to say. And that's just the way it was done, and that's the way most searches are done. Well, along comes the pandemic. We can't do focus groups in person anymore. So the first thing we did was like this. We had Zoom meetings or Google meetings, and we would invite staff members, just, you know, we did it at seven fifteen in the morning. So middle school staff one day, high school staff the next day, elementary school, whatever it is, however the staff wanted to participate. I have to tell you, there's something about being on camera that makes people not want to say anything. I had a focus group with thirty staff members. And forty-five minutes later, only four people had said anything. Everyone else was there to listen and to lurk. No one wanted to share their true thoughts. So when we realized what was happening, we weren't getting good feedback, we took all of those questions online. So we did a listening session survey electronically. We could not believe the response rate skyrocketed because people suddenly could fill it out at any time. It didn't have to be at seven fifteen on a Wednesday morning. You know, they could fill it out twenty-four seven at their house. It was also completely anonymous, and so the transparency of their responses increased dramatically. So one of the things that we're going to look at is these listening sessions and focus groups, is it better to do it online and invite people to answer questions, open-ended questions? So it's very qualitative. It's not the number crunching. But it is one option that you might want to think about. Andrea?
Quick question. Do those focus groups have to be held also following open meeting law?
No, but I don't know why you would close those. That's a great question. Open meeting law applies to board business. And if the board is making decisions, that's open meeting law. If it is an input forum where you want to hear from the community, we usually recommend that the board doesn't attend those. Because if you're conducting a focus group and there's a board member in the back, they're not gonna say what they really think. So we, board members don't like to hear that because you want to show you're involved and you care and you want to listen, but it can really stifle conversation. But those generally are open. Now, I suppose you could do, I used to work for a focus group firm, you could invite certain people and hold focus groups with, you know, certain people from certain stakeholder groups. And it's then a very, it's not a cattle call where you say, everyone can come. That is, that is an option. And you could certainly look at doing it that way, too. Now, keep in mind, if you do go online with your listening session questions or, and/or you're quantitative, you have to provide hard copies as well. Because not everyone has access to or can use a computer, ADA requirements. You want to make sure that hard copies are made very available, so in all of your buildings, at the district office. So anyone who needs to fill it out in person can do so. All right, but please do involve your stakeholders. The last phase of a stakeholder, yes, Crystal?
Oh, you were, I thought you were transitioning off of stakeholders. So if you want to finish your stakeholder point, then I'll ask my question.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you. The last opportunity to involve stakeholders is during the interview process. And again, everyone does this a little bit differently. Let's say you have two rounds of interviews, round one and round two. Round one might be six people, round two might be three people. It's best if you're gonna invite stakeholders to participate, in our opinion, to do it during round two. Because six interviews is a lot. And you're asking people to watch all interviews. They have to watch all of them or it's not a level playing field. So if someone commits to watching this interview and that interview, they also have to watch that one, that one, that one, and that one. And it's extremely time-consuming. The interviews are an hour long with fifteen minutes between typically. You could certainly do them shorter if you wanted to. But that's asking a lot for people to sit through that many. So we say it's typically better in the second round, when you have two or three people. And you could do a couple of things. You could set up stakeholder groups to actually interview the candidates. Some districts will do that, where they have a select group of staff, maybe ten to twelve people that prepare questions in advance. They have to go through interview training, so they're abiding by the law. They will interview the candidate, come to some consensus on what they think of that candidate, and prepare a real short summary for the board to use during your deliberations. You could have two or three different stakeholder groups sort of around robin, where those interviews are occurring while you're interviewing people as a board. That, that's one option. It is quite a bit of work and it's a big commitment from those folks, but it is one way to have them feel a part of that process. You can't just say, anyone who wants to interview the candidate, just show up and talk to them. There's too many legalities involved where someone might ask an illegal question. You don't want that liability getting back to the school district. So it's, it's an invited process or a representative process. You also could, this is what a lot of districts are doing now, invite people to watch your interviews. The school board is still gonna interview those three people. You can have invited stakeholders representing different bargaining units, members of the community to be a part of that, and they commit to watching all three. And then they fill out individual feedback forms between each interview. And then your consultant would get all of that information and synthesize it down into a summary report for you to consider during your deliberations. That's happening more and more often. It doesn't ask quite as much of those stakeholders to go through training and all of that sort of thing. But it does provide them a window into seeing each candidate answer all of your questions. So that, that's another way to invite candidates to participate is at the tail end of the process. Okay, Crystal?
No, I'm glad that I waited because that was helpful to hear. I, I feel like I'm, I'm very much like cognizant of, you know, at the very beginning, we talked about the board has the hiring responsibility. And we need to be clear about that and we need to maintain that responsibility. And I'm super cognizant of the fact that, to be blunt, I feel like we have the least proximity to the day-to-day experiences of the school district. And so I'm, I, I feel like I'm gonna be trying to think a lot about how do we honor and acknowledge that we are the people who are in this position of power and are not the people who are going to be most directly affected by this decision on a day-to-day basis when thinking about designing the process. So I feel like you just gave some helpful examples about some things that that could entail, and the rest comes in having a really thoughtful and intentional design around the different opportunities for engagement all along the way.
What you said. That was perfect. Yes, very thoughtful and intentional. Understanding that whatever decisions you make about stakeholders may have unintended consequences. It, it may make them feel that they have more decision-making authority than they do. Just be very thoughtful in it and you will be just fine. And they will appreciate the opportunity to provide input. That first survey is when it's really easiest to get input because think about how many staff persons you have. If every one of them fills out that survey, every one of them has a voice and have been a part of this. It's, it's a matter of who participates. And you don't want the squeaky wheel being the only people who are heard. And sometimes with focus groups, that's what happens. Is the only people willing to speak up are the ones that you hear from, and that does not represent all of your stakeholders. So I really appreciate that you pointed that out and you're very aware of, I think, the opportunities and obstacles to collecting stakeholder feedback. Any other questions on stakeholders? They are a very important part of the process.
And this may not be something that can be answered at this point, but given that every district has a variety of stakeholders, and in our case, that pool of people also includes our member districts. So we have eleven different member districts and we need to gather input from their business directors, their special ed directors, superintendents, and you know, there are going to be other constituents within that, that group. And then the immediate families we serve and our educators. So I don't know if you have any guidance with our more unique situation?
Yep. Most importantly, you get to decide who your stakeholders are. If you're working with a consulting firm, do not let them tell you who you should talk to. Because you know your district better than anyone and you want to make sure you are reaching into all of those pockets of stakeholders. So if you're using a consultant, they'll prepare the survey for you. They'll get you the link electronically. They'll get you the hard copies to print and have available throughout the district. Then it really is up to the district to disseminate the survey link. We have districts that, for example, have text messaging. And they wanted to do it that way, so they included the link and we, some, someone would provide for you some language, press release language, email language, text message language to sort of capture the, the spirit of the survey. So you could distribute that through an email blast to those different groups because you probably have distribution lists that fit. You could do it via text. You can send press releases to all of the newspapers in the communities that you serve. Obviously, it's on your, your website, probably on the homepage. You know, superintendent search should be a great big banner on your homepage for, for your district when you launch the search. Click here to take the survey. It really becomes incumbent on the school district once you have that link to get the word out. And then whoever's administering the survey for you should let you know maybe halfway through sort of where you're sitting, because you'll have a huge bump right away. You know, people are excited. They want to take the survey and they do, and there's a huge response. Usually, it's staff. The first blush is really mostly staff. And then it kind of gets quiet. So halfway through, you should ask or find out how many responses are there and do another nudge through the same channels. And then just before it closes, maybe two days before the survey's ready to close, you send out a last chance to tell us what you think. And so that usually gets another big response right at the end. But you will decide who you want to reach out to and how. Whatever channels, social media, whatever channels you normally use to communicate are the ones you should lean on for your search.
Thank you.
Yep. Anyone else? Okay. Stakeholders, very important part of the process. Hiring criteria. This is so fascinating. When we start talking about hiring criteria, you already recognize, I can tell from some of the comments as well, that you have unique circumstances in two eighty-seven. So you will be looking for certain qualifications, skill sets, perhaps personality characteristics, temperament. And so you get to define the kind of superintendent you're looking for. So whoever you're working with, or if you're doing it internally, you want to have a conversation about what kind of superintendent will best fit where we are now and where we want to go. So this is why school boards are so important here, because you're the ones who understand the strategic plan. And you understand the strategic plan better than, for example, the staff may, because you've been developing a vision in partnership with your superintendent. So as important as stakeholders are, because they're the boots on the ground and they're everyday working with your students and, and focused on the mission, you are setting the direction for the district. You are setting the vision. And when you hire a superintendent, you are hiring for the future. So here is where you really need to rely on your expertise. Not the day-to-day, not the management of the district. This is the governance issue, is who will fit your district the best? So you need to define that. You have some really great conversations around it. Sometimes a consultant firm will have a survey you take with, you know, here's twenty-seven criteria. Pick your top ten. And then you have an aggregate of the board's responses and you talk through what really matters. You eliminate some, you come up with your own. Because again, the unique circumstances in your district, you're looking for someone that would not necessarily do a great job in one of your home districts. But they'd do a phenomenal job in two eighty-seven. So having those hiring criteria conversations early on, right away when you're talking about the timeline, hiring criteria is just as important. A very strategic decision here. Who are we looking for? And then you need to find a way to articulate that anywhere from five to eight bullet points. Because candidates will want to see themselves in your hiring criteria. And if they don't, they may realize that they're not a fit and they're not gonna waste their time and your time to apply. If you know what you want and are clear about it, you have a much greater chance of success.
Question?
Yes?
I was wondering, should you upfront, early on, decide whether you're gonna do a search outside of your district or determine whether you're gonna do an internal search?
And when you say.
I just go with internal candidates, I guess.
Thank you. That was I looking for, Ruthie. Do internal search, do you mean internal candidates or do you mean, you know, internally staff? So I would say you need to decide that very early on. And if you're going to perhaps look only at internal candidates, I don't know that you need to hire a search firm for that. That's a much smaller scale endeavor.
Right.
You have really good timing because at the bottom of this page about hiring criteria talks about internal applicants. So making that decision early on is important. Now, keep in mind that you're not required to do a search. You could hire whoever you want to, whenever you want to. I will say that most, at least external candidates, will not be able to begin working for you until a July first date. Most of them are in contracts that take them through the end of June. Internal candidates potentially could start in January or March. Generally speaking, external folks have to fulfill their obligations to a contract before they could actually start. But if you decide to conduct a search and if it is a larger encompassing search outside of internal candidates, really important that you treat every internal candidate the same as external candidates. There cannot be any appearance of favoritism. You really shouldn't encourage internal staff to apply too much. Because when a board member suggests they apply, people hear an endorsement or they hear something that isn't necessarily true. So opening up a search to all candidates, making sure that everybody internally is aware of it and you welcome internal applications is really important. And then as board members, I'd step back. And I'd stop there so that you don't appear to be lobbying for anybody or giving anyone an unfair advantage. Because if it doesn't go in that candidate's direction at the end, you're talking about hurt feelings on behalf of stakeholders. Well, if you have an internal candidate that thinks they have a lock on the job and then they don't get it, that, that is a lot of hurt that doesn't need to occur. So again, thoughtful, I'm gonna use that word again, because it's a great word. Being thoughtful about that approach is super important. And again, just not treating them any differently. It's the exact same process regardless of internal or external. But you don't have to conduct a search. And you also, if you collect RFP, you know, through an RFP process, you collect proposals, you don't have to take the low bid. You know, it's not like a construction project at all. This is a whole different way of, of hiring a service provider. Okay, great question. Thank you, Ruthie.
Thank you. Thank you.
Once you've defined your hiring criteria and your timeline, you do want to think about how you get the word out. I'll have to tell you, the most effective way of getting the word out is word of mouth. People talk. That's just without question. And it's exciting when people talk because it means they're excited about the opportunity or they know someone they think is a great fit. Also, however, it really does need to be posted. You'll want to think through if you want this to be sort of a regional search, Minnesota, or if you want it to be Midwest region, or if you want to do a national search. There are a lot of places to post your position. So thinking through some of the options, there's a few in here. Obviously, you want it on MSBA's site, MASA's site. We're probably the two biggest places where people put their superintendent openings. And Post is also a really good one to put it on through St. Cloud State University. If you want to go national, you can go with the American Association of School Administrators. If you're looking for a diverse pool, you could look at getting the National Alliance of Black School Educators. You could also advertise on the National Association of Special Ed Teachers in your case. You know, we're conducting the nine seventeen search and one of the places we suggested and we're getting good interest from is the Special Education Association for folks who want to be or are already in administration. So strategically choosing where to advertise is a decision that you'll want to make as well. Spread the word as far or as regionally as you want to. Your search again, you own this, you'll make those decisions. Our question, there are questions on this part of the process. All right. Seeing none, we're gonna move on to screening the applicants on the bottom of page five. And this goes back to the question that was asked earlier about, don't give away the board's authority to hire your superintendent. Screening applicants is a really fascinating part of the process because, you know, there's a lot of work the first probably three weeks of your search. You're defining criteria, you're defining timeline, you're creating the vacancy announcement, you're positioning your opportunity in the market. That's a really busy time for the board and whoever is helping you with the search and for staff if they're working on it. And then there's a lull. It gets posted, the survey's open, and it's quiet for maybe four weeks. And the survey closes. And you have a lot of data to digest. Hopefully, someone will summarize it for you so you're not just reading, you know, eighty-five pages of raw data. You want someone to summarize it so that you can get the big picture of the themes and the patterns in your survey. But then the deadline passes. If your position's been open for six to eight weeks, that's probably about average, you know, six to eight week application period. And I do want to say that applying for a position of superintendent is a lot of work. Someone who wants to be superintendent has got to jump through plenty of hoops. No matter who's doing the search or how you're doing it, obviously resumes, references, transcripts, work history, all of that has to be gathered and provided and uploaded because this is done all electronically now. But once you get to start looking through those applications, it's kind of like shopping for a superintendent because you learn so much about these people. They've answered your questions and you can get a feel for who they are. Their writing style. You look at their work history, you read their letters of reference, and you start to feel like you get to know them. And you want to envision, could I see this person in our district? Sometimes you'll fall in love with a resume in an application. This is the one and you know it. And so by consensus, you decide to interview that person because everyone's overwhelmed with how wonderful they are on paper. Well, that's why interviews are really important. Because sometimes, not often, but sometimes that person does not come across in the interview in a way that makes you feel comfortable with their leadership. So we'll caution you when you screen the applicants. Don't fall in love with what you see on paper. You'll be tempted to. But keep an open mind. Take some notes about each person. Now remember, this is private data. So as you're reviewing these applications, one, you don't print it out and take it to Caribou Coffee to look at the applications while you're having your morning coffee. Someone's gonna see what you're looking at, or you might accidentally leave it there, or you could get in a car accident and it blows all over the interstate. You're violating data privacy in every single one of those scenarios. So we would suggest you review these electronically only, and you do it in private, privacy. Not at your kitchen table where someone can walk by and see a name on your screen. And all of a sudden, it's like, I didn't know they were applying for your job. So keeping those names private is super important. But you really should enjoy that part of the process because you're beginning to get to know the possibilities. All right. Once you have selected your finalists, A, B, C, whomever, and you've announced the names, then you put all of those applications behind you, as I mentioned earlier. No one will ever know who applied for your position. They will only know the ones you've decided to interview. Correct? Okay. Real important. Any questions on screening those applications? I don't think you're gonna have, you know, fifty applicants. I don't think you're gonna have, you know, 50 applicants to go through. That would be highly unusual. The most I've seen for a position is probably 33, 34. This year, it's in the teens by and large. But you never know. You just, you never know. Screening questions? Okay, sounds good. The media can be one of the best parts of your search. And I know this is unusual, because you don't necessarily have a community newspaper. You know, you have community newspapers, many things. You have regional television stations, you have local radio stations. So the media may or may not cover an intermediate search the way that they would in your home districts. Some of you have been through the search, the four of you who've done that, you may have had an unpleasant experience with the media covering your search. That happens. Particularly if a district is perceived as violating the open meeting law. Media will report that. And so you want to be clear and transparent in every opportunity and invite the media in to see, to witness, to be a part of, to share the information about about your search. That will develop an extraordinarily good relationship and they'll be the first people to print your press releases when you've selected finalists or selected your candidates. So that's real important. Now, when it comes to media, number one, appointed doesn't mean a spokesperson. You know, this is a large board. This is 11 representatives. You will want to appoint one person early in the search who will speak to the media on the board's behalf. This is again, one of those circumstances where you're not 11 individual board members. You are a single unit school board for 287. So one person's gonna speak on your behalf. Typically, it's the board chair. It does not have to be, but typically it is. And that is also a decision that you want to make really early on. That makes, that makes sense though, right? Because if there's interest in this position, and I never know if there's going to be or if there isn't, that one person will make sure that they are representing your interests to the best of their abilities. And then there's one story out there, instead of multiple board members saying multiple things. That just gets really messy. So don't do that. Any questions on the media? Okay, great. We're making pretty good time. Everyone's still awake. It's quarter to nine. You're doing wonderful. All right, the interview, page eight is what we're gonna talk about next. All right. Oh, did I skip? Oh, the one thing I skipped over, I apologize. The bottom of page five talks about salary. You can read that at your leisure. Different search firms have different philosophies on that. You have a couple of options. You could say the very generic, we will pay based on experience and qualifications. Or we will offer a competitive compensation package for our region. You can say whatever you want to. Sometimes it's preferable perhaps to put a number in there of some kind. The current superintendent's salary is. So at least there's some context. Now, you have a long-tenured superintendent with a lot of experience. We don't want people setting the bar that high if it's gonna be their first superintendency. You could put, we will offer a minimum salary of, knowing that the whole compensation package will be much larger. That will be entirely up to you, how you address it. And again, there's four, five, six different ways to do it. And it'll definitely be a conversation you have early on, because that has to go in your vacancy brochure. So be thinking about salary conversations, be thinking about advertising the salary or not way back at that planning meeting before you start putting the brochure together. Okay. The interview. Again, I'll just repeat once more that these are all open meetings. And this is challenging for school board members who are used to conducting their interviews behind closed doors. If they're in the private sector, if they own their own business, even if they're in the nonprofit sector, interviews are done in private. And there are states where interviews for school superintendents are done in private. Minnesota is the open meeting law capital of the world, so you cannot do that. And it feels very uncomfortable for board members that want to be able to really dig into an interview and ask follow-up questions and follow conversation threads all over, get to know the person, you know, tell some stories, hear some stories. None of that is gonna happen in your interviews of superintendent candidates in Minnesota. It should not happen. I should say that. It could happen, where boards go off on all kinds of tangents and personal anecdotes with their candidates. It is just not a very good idea. You want to ask the same questions in the same order of all of your candidates. Level playing field. You also need to be careful what you ask. Again, we'll get into some don't ask questions here. But if you have an approach to your interviews that is well thought out, documented, that this is how we're going to do it, and you've agreed to it as a board, then you're gonna do very, very well in your interviews. To go back to the early question, I think it was Andrea, you can't screw this up. If you stick to the plan, you know, have a plan, implement the plan and follow up on the plan, you're gonna be just fine. All right. But the interviews are where you really get to know people and you're asking questions specific to 287. There's some questions here on page nine and 10 and 11. These are just a few. If your consulting firm is working with you, they should have a whole stable of questions that you can ask around all kinds of different topics. You will want the questions to reflect your hiring criteria. All right, so you want to ask questions. That's kind of that yardstick. Here's what we're looking for. So of course, you have to ask questions about those things. That just makes sense. However, you can ask broader questions. You can ask for specific examples. By the time you're in your second round of interviews, you want to be asking scenario questions. So people go a little bit deeper with their answers and take a little longer to answer your questions. So these are some ideas, but there are millions of interview questions out there. I'm sure some of you have interview questions from the searches you've been a part of. But again, someone should be able to guide you through and identify with you the best questions for round one and round two. Now, if you want to talk about how to screw it up, go to page 12. Please don't ask illegal questions. You'd be surprised sometimes, the things that boards want to know about their candidates. Very clearly here, there are protected classes. And you cannot ask questions about the things that are in green on page 12. It seems like common sense. And yet, sometimes people are just really curious about some things about a candidate or about their background. The one thing that you can't control is if a candidate volunteers information that reveals something about themselves that might be a protected class. If that happens, just in the back of your mind, you strike it from the record and you move on with the interview. But if they've told you about their family, or they've shared their ethnicity with you, or they've mentioned religion, please just strike those from the record, don't consider them in your hiring decision, but you can't stop them from volunteering that information. You simply need to disregard it. And that just makes sense, right? I know we've got HR folks here on the call or on the meeting and it's like, yeah, you just have to be super careful to stay away from these questions and don't get caught up in the details. You know, if you're able to interview, and I hope you are in person by the time you conduct interviews, one of the times it gets most risky for school boards is the small talk. You know, the candidate arrives and you're kind of waiting for the interview to start and you start chatting about things that seem real innocent. The weather is really safe. But you would not believe how quickly small talk can turn into talking about your family or talking about your time off work and habits or hobbies that you have or your alma mater, which might be Notre Dame. You just, you don't know. And so, small talk is potentially dangerous. Now, the one thing that people will say is, but we want to take our candidates out to dinner. And some districts do that. And some search firms say, sure, go out and get to know everybody on a personal level. You know, this night, this candidate dinner, this night, this candidate dinner, and this night, this candidate dinner. We think that's a slippery slope for a couple of reasons. One is when you take people out to dinner as a board, it's not posted as an open meeting. And you're conducting board business to some degree. So you need to be really careful about the open meeting law when you're socializing with your candidates. Two, they may bring along their spouse, which should be completely irrelevant to the hiring process. And three, people tend to have a little bit of alcohol at those gatherings. And so as board members, we would recommend that you just don't do that. However, your process, your decision. If you want to do it, you are welcome to. We would recommend you not do it. So I'll stop there. But there are occasionally horror stories of boards that interview candidates over too many glasses of wine. And it just does not look good when the board's making their decision that that occurs, so.
What about asking questions regarding legal matters like lawsuits?
I would have to turn to the don't ask list and find out, boy. I don't know the answer to that one, Sam. That's a great question. I know in our materials, our search materials, we have specific examples of what you can and can't ask. Give me one second. I'll look this up. I don't know the answer to this one yet. So if you'll bear with me.
Sam, do you think things like lawsuits that the person has been involved in in their professional job?
Yes.
Okay.
Lawsuits are public knowledge, so it would not be a don't ask.
Okay. Thank you very much, Anne. Okay. Yep, thank you. There are permissible ways to ask about categories also that might be protected. But you would be careful of that. And with counsel with Anne available, I'm sure you'd be able to avoid stepping into any big puddles, so. All right. So during the interview process, the don't ask, the social aspects, the small talk, it's safer as a board to proceed on the straight and narrow and have, you know, stay in your lane with the questions you ask and how you get to know this person. But again, that'll be your choice. You know, one of the, one of the things that your home districts may want to ask, we don't see it as much, I think, in intermediate districts, is do you plan to move into our district? Will your family be relocating into our community? And boy, is that not okay to ask. Small towns in particular seem to want to know the person's gonna join their community and buy a home in town and that can't be asked. So flipping to page 13. The candidates will ask you questions. Hopefully, they will have answered their questions that you've asked in a sufficient amount of time to leave 10 or 15 minutes at the end for them to ask you questions. Here are some examples on page 13 of what they might ask. They are beginning to ask tougher and tougher questions though. So it's really good as a board to think ahead. You know, if they ask about our strategic plan, who on the board wants to handle that one? So you do a little bit of strategizing ahead of time so that you already know who's handling this kind of question or this kind of question. You all, I'm sure, have areas of expertise or passion that you would love to answer that question. So give some thought to that. And you can tell a lot about the person from the questions they'll ask you. Likewise, they're interviewing you at the same time and they're gonna be listening for what you say, but also how you interact as a board. You know, you don't only want two or three people answering all the questions. If possible, each of you should be able to give at least one answer to those questions. It's time sensitive. You know, if you run out of time, you run out of time. But you know, Chair Neville as chair would say, great, that's a great question. Who wants to answer that? And someone will volunteer. She should not be the one handling all of those questions. That's not a good look. A candidate wants to see you collaborating and building off of one another. Michelle, did you have a question? I saw that you unmuted.
Yeah, I just thought I'd remind people who may or may not know. We were a board of 26 members at the time we hired Sandy. It was two from each member district, 13 member districts, and then over time, we did away with that. But we're still a large board compared to our local board. And the superintendent has to play this role with all other superintendents. So there are certain dynamics of an intermediate, as you have stated, that are very different. Also, how do you handle a district that has more or less a succession plan that is public knowledge?
Wow. First of all, 26. I have never known a school board to be that large.
Oh, it was fun.
Sure, but school board, I bet that was fun. Wow. Okay, so as far as the succession plan, if it's public, you can handle that one of two ways. You can follow the succession plan to the letter and probably not conduct a search. Or you could say, you know, this is a living document and it's evolving. And since we created the succession plan, circumstances have changed enough that we're comfortable revising this in some way, shape or form. Things have changed so quickly this year. I don't know how, how long ago the succession plan might have been created. If it was created, you know, last month, that's pretty current. Even six months or a year ago, that succession plan is likely out of date at the pace things are moving right now. But I would be very, very clear about that with your public. So it doesn't sound as though you're, you know, switcheroo on anybody. It's just things have changed and here's why. And if you have very valid reasons and you explain them, then I don't think folks could argue with that.
Not that I'm saying we do or don't.
Yep, very different. Definitely don't grow your own programs or they're building leaders within their own organization. There's a lot of districts that do that. Some very successfully, some not, but that's definitely an option. You know, the interview mistakes that are on page 14, I'm not gonna go through those. But this is the how, how to mess it up if you do, which I know you won't. So I would just say, read these 10 things and don't do these and you'll be just fine. The first one, the incomplete notes one, I won't dwell on, but you will need to take notes, especially if you are looking at all of the applications. It's gonna be overwhelming. After two or three, you're gonna have a hard time remembering the first person, because there's so much you're absorbing. So you want to take some notes to jog your memory about these candidates. Please keep those notes professional and appropriate and off the don't ask list. You know, don't write things down. And when they interview, don't try to, don't write down in your notes what they look like. So you remember them by what they look like, how tall they are, what race they are. Please don't write any of that down. You need to focus on their answers and how those answers resonate with you and how you remember those, those folks. And the reason for that is that your notes are subject to a data request. The notes you're taking on your candidates could be, probably not, I haven't seen it yet, but could be requested by the media or a candidate or a member of the public and your board notes are a part of this process. So keeping those professional is, is very, very important. So not to dwell on those, but are there any questions on interview mistakes? Nope?
I had a, I had a question on the don't ask list. Can you clarify what is membership or activity in a local commission?
Oh, let's see. I have not been asked that yet. Anne, might you have an idea of what that exactly means? I know these are taken from statute. Membership or commission?
It's a protected class under the Minnesota Human Rights Act, which is why it's listed there. And I would imagine it would be, you know, it could be a parks board, or it could be somebody who's a town supervisor, or any kind of commission or committee or group of people that are meeting for some purpose could qualify here.
Okay.
Okay, so that wouldn't necessarily include somebody's like public, well, not public service, but like nonprofit service or, you know, I volunteer with literacy clubs. It wouldn't qualify for that, right?
That's right.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Anne. I appreciate it. I learned something tonight, because I've never been asked that, so I appreciate it. All right, we're drawing to a close with the book anyway. On page 16, it will talk about checking references. Now, as part of that screening process, either your in-house staff or your consulting firm will be checking references. They'll be vetting those candidates deeper than just what they're seeing on paper. So that will be done already. However, the board should really do its own due diligence, usually between the first round of interviews and the second, just to dig a little bit deeper. Someone from the board would volunteer to do it, only one person, so that the same person is asking interview questions of references. And sometimes it surprises us that the references will tell a board member something that they haven't necessarily told the search firm. Not often, but occasionally, because if you're calling another board member and you're a board member, they may share something with you that's very, very useful about your finalists. So we do encourage the board to make some reference calls between the two sets of interviews, more than anything that usually confirms what you already know. You know, what you heard about the candidates during the selection process, what you learned from them during their first round of interviews, what you've read in those letter references. No one's gonna list a reference on their form if they aren't sure they're gonna say nice things about them. So it confirms things more often than not. Now, occasionally, a board member really enjoys- Now, occasionally, a board member really enjoys, not detective, really enjoys looking for information, so they'll go off the list of provided references. And that is okay, at least depending on the search firm you're using, if the application process includes acknowledgement that persons in my, I can't think of the legal language, I apologize for it, but they recognize that there is work done to look into their work history, educational history, that the, you know, the FCRA Form Fair Cut Reporting Act, they check that they understand that this is a part of the process. So sometimes a board member will call folks not listed. You know, maybe they'll call the administrative assistant in the district office, or they'll call the head custodian in the district. And they'll look for folks that have had interactions with these candidates that aren't off the traditional radar. That's entirely up to you. It doesn't happen very often. Typically, they'll call the folks listed on the resume or in the letters of reference, but by and large, you have the freedom to call folks outside of that list, within reason. You don't want to stalk somebody and, you know, make 30 phone calls about someone. That would be very counterproductive to building a good relationship with these candidates. But if you call two or three people to confirm what you think you already know about this person, that can be very helpful, just to know you're on the right track. With that, I think these forms, oh, debating in public, gosh, I can't switch that. Page 19, I have to tell you that site visits just don't happen much anymore. You know, there was a day when the six-month search was a normal part of it, that you'd be down to two candidates, and you would go visit their home districts. And you would walk around the buildings, or you'd go to the cafe, and you'd ask questions about people of these candidates. That's not happening anymore because of how fast things are moving. You certainly can do it. You certainly can. It will take time, though, and you may lose a candidate to another offer if you're taking too long wanting to visit their home district and ask around. So site visits, not as common as they were, I think, even five or 10 years ago. They were very common. I think MSBA in the last two years has done 44 searches, 43 searches. Not one of those districts did any site visits. So doesn't mean you couldn't if it was important to you. Page 22, yes?
Barb, how common is it for the candidate, the finalists, to do a site visit at one of the schools in the district?
It was much more common before the pandemic. We have had a couple of folks in the last month dropping in on the district to get a feel for it. Particularly, there's construction projects going on. There's some candidates who want to know what they're getting into before their second interview. I would say out of every 10 candidates, if they're approaching their second round, I'd say 50, 50 to 60% of them will make a site visit to the potential hiring district. And they often don't line it up in advance. They just drop in and ask for a tour or want to meet people. And that's acceptable, but it's up to your administrative staff in those buildings if they want to accommodate that or not. They're busy, so a drop-in visit isn't always going to work real well. But they'll want to drive around and look at buildings. They should not be contacting board members, though, to get a tour of the community. Don't let that happen where they reach out and say, hey, I'm going to be in town Saturday. Can you show me around town? Don't do that as board members. You have to stay out of those personal connections any way you can. Did that help, Anne? Was that okay?
I was actually thinking about it in terms of would the board want the candidate to visit a school, in this case, to be able to see how they react to our students, for example?
Got it. Thank you for clarifying that. When we can have people back in schools again comfortably. In the old days, the day of the second round interviews, candidates spent the whole day in the district. And they come in the morning, perhaps there's a tour guide assigned to them to take them to some of the buildings. Those are arranged in advance, so I want to clarify that. They'll have potentially lunch with their host. Never a board member again, but they will come in and spend the day, which includes their interview with the board. But they will get a tour. They'll get to see the cafeteria with the kids milling about. They will get to do that, and that was very common pre-pandemic.
Thank you, Barb.
Okay, and thanks for clarifying. I didn't mean to skip over that. So this is where you need to stop me and make sure I'm hearing you correctly. All right, debating in public on page 22. I can't tell you how important it is when you're talking about these candidates. Going back to what I said at the very beginning, they may be hearing you talk about them, if you're live streaming in particular. If you're back, do you livestream even when you're back in your building? Or do you do open meeting law where people who want to see need to come in and watch? Or do you livestream no matter what?
Livestreaming has been new with the pandemic when we moved to virtual meetings. So the technology is now available to do that, and we haven't discussed what it'll be like when we're back in our buildings. Although when we're back hybrid, which we have done some hybrid board meetings, those are still livestreamed. So we'll see what happens post-pandemic.
Okay, sounds good. If you are limiting the open meeting law to the building, so anyone who wants to come and hear your deliberations needs to physically come in and sit and listen, which is how it mostly was pre-pandemic. Your candidates probably aren't going to come in and sit and listen. That makes everyone a little uncomfortable, but I'll tell you, it has happened, particularly with internal candidates. They've come and sat in on board meetings. If it's live streaming, you don't know who's watching. So what we always say is emphasize the positive attributes. It's really wonderful to see a board, even boards who are normally a bit divided, if they focus on, let's say they're talking about the first candidate, they all should say something positive, highlight her strengths that they noticed, something they really liked that she said. And then they move on to the next candidate, and they point out the strengths in his interview. It's very affirming when the board is highlighting the positive attributes of each candidate. Now, that doesn't mean that some candidates didn't not do very well because some of them get really nervous, or they don't put their best foot forward. But they still put themselves out there, and they still have some very positive things to talk about. And I've seen boards start to coalesce around the positive, positive sense of, these are all really good people. We really liked all of these candidates. And wow, you know, you start to really build this energy around strengths of everyone, even when you then need to say, well, you know, once you've talked about all the great things about each of these people, someone needs to say, well, you know, knowing that we need to move forward, I'm leaning toward Sally and Sam. Those are the two I'd probably want to take to the next interview. So you do have to at some point move forward with who you're leaning toward bringing back for round two or who you're leaning toward making an offer to. But there's no need to delve into what you didn't like about them in public. There's absolutely no need. Now, the only time where you may need to discuss weaknesses per se is if you're in like a complete tie, and you have two candidates, and you are completely split, and they would both be incredible. Sometimes at that point, you may need to look at, well, this person's strength in budgeting is much stronger. I think there'd be some room to grow for this other candidate in budgeting. Not exactly a weakness, but you might need to, if you're in a dead heat, turn to the areas of growth that may help you sort of tip the scales toward one person and not the other. But otherwise, we at least recommend that you don't go there. And I think it sums it up here, the last sentence or last paragraph. School boards that plan ahead, abide by the law, and treat people with respect seldom have difficulty filling the position. We've even seen school boards where, for some reason or another, the negotiations with the first candidate don't come to fruition, and it's disappointing. And yet, if you've had a strong enough second candidate, if you make an offer to them, very often, there can be successful negotiations with, quote, "your second choice." But they feel so well-treated by the board and so respected by the process that they're happy to accept the position. There was one board two years ago that actually went to their third choice, and they're very happy with them. But because of the process, that person was pleased to take the position. It didn't feel like they were settling for them because you don't want to settle. You should not have to settle, but in this case, they weren't. Three really strong finalists. The third one is who actually took the job. All right, so I'm not going to talk too much more about that. I think you completely understand why it's important to keep this positive when you're in an open meeting. It's good for the board. It's good for the public, good for the staff, and very good for the candidates. Any questions on that at all? Okay, then at the very end here, it talks about the contract. You will negotiate the contract per your district's choice. You can have the contract you currently have in place as the model. We do recommend the MASA, MSBA model contract as a good starting point. There are a lot of different ways to structure your contract, but that's entirely up to you, the board, and bringing in legal counsel or whomever else might be a part of those contract negotiations.
Barb, can I ask you a quick question on this? I know that if it is the full board that is doing contract negotiations, it is public because the superintendent's not part of a bargaining unit. Have you seen hiring processes where like the board chair takes the lead on negotiating? Or is it recommended that this all happen in public with the full board once it reaches the negotiation phase?
Most often, the board chair will negotiate on behalf of the board.
Okay.
The open meeting law would not apply. If it's a committee, you know, there are people who interpret the open meeting law that as long as it's not a quorum, we're okay not having an open meeting law. MSBA always recommends more than one member of the board is present, the open meeting law applies. So we would not recommend a committee do it. However, protocols locally tend to take precedence. But most often, the board will have had a conversation in an open meeting saying, here's the salary range we're comfortable with, here's the compensation package we're comfortable with, or you're looking at your current superintendent's contract and saying, we like paragraphs E, D, F. We don't like paragraph H. Because superintendent contracts are public. Anybody who wants it can get it. But you could have that in front of you as the board discusses what to keep and what to get out of the contract. And then the board chair could take that into negotiations one-on-one with your candidate. That is most common, Crystal, actually. Great questions. That is the conclusion of the booklet. I don't know that it's the conclusion of your questions. So I'm going to turn it back over to you and make sure I've answered all the questions that you may have. No one fell asleep. That's always a good sign. I know you had a meeting before this one, so you're probably tired. But you're at a really exciting and important point for your district. Selecting your next leader is a tremendous opportunity. And the legacy of your current superintendent is going to make this, I believe, very successful for your district. But what else might you need to know? I'll stay as long as you need me to.
Well, Barb, I just want to start by saying thank you because the information, the booklet, having that in advance and going through, you know, going through the material is extremely helpful. I appreciate the way you worded things. It's one thing to just know here are the guidelines and the expectations of a superintendent's search process, but the way you worded things was also really helpful to just figure out, how do we do this? How do we incorporate it?
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Well, if there are no questions, I will log off. However, you know that you can call MSBA at any point, at any time. My email address is on the website, and I would look forward to seeing what happens next for your district. Enjoy thinking about what you're going to do and enjoy that luxury of time that you have. That's, wow, kudos to your superintendent to allow you to do that. So, all right, everyone, well, have a great night.
Thank you.
Take care.
Thank you.
We can help you with, okay? All right, take care. Bye-bye.
All right, well, it's been a long evening, so I don't want to stretch this out much further. But thank you all. I really appreciate the chance for us to just have this opportunity to get on the same page, discuss the process, and have some of the same information going forward. What I've talked to Superintendent Lewandowski about is considering allocation of some workshop time at future meetings so that we can discuss next steps. So my recommendation is that we each just reflect on everything that we've taken in this evening. And if there are any questions that people come up with, we'll find a way to address those so that they're answered. But certainly, this is just the beginning of our discussion. So one of our next steps will be to schedule a workshop. I don't know a date yet, but a future workshop to discuss how we want to proceed as a group. And we'll be talking probably early on about the scope of the search. What is the right shape for intermediate district 287 with a consultant or not a consultant, and how we want to proceed? Does anybody else have any questions or comments before we finish up for this evening?
I just want to say thanks again to the staff who stuck with us tonight through this. We know that this was more time for you all and appreciate you being with us from the very beginning of the process all the way through towards where we're going to go together.
Well said. Thank you for including us. We appreciate it.
It is very helpful to have you here. There's expertise of all kinds that we need, and this makes a difference.
All right, I think everybody deserves to call it a night. Thank you all. Stay tuned for next steps. We will convene again within the next. I don't know if it'll be our next board meeting, but in March, I'm hoping to have another workshop, depending on the schedule, so we can discuss next steps. So thank you all. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.